All right, I'm going to call to order the meeting of the Haverford Township Zoning Hearing Board of Thursday, January 30th. President at the front table to my far -- excuse me. Can you take a seat, please? President at the front table to my far left is Jessica Battali. My left, Ernie Angelos, our solicitor. My right, Bill Rhodes, voting member. Jesse Pointon, a voting member. And Jonathan Mount, the zoning officer. We have one continued case. This meeting was actually scheduled as a special meeting for this case in particular. Before we begin, Bill, would you please lead us in the pledge?
Sure. Please rise. Mr. Stu Stagg died in the interim. He was involved with the stands when they forgot individual cases. Three charges.
Okay. The one case this evening is case Z 23-17, continuation of a previous hearing and an amended application of Sun &amp; Raj Fuel LLC, owners of 700 Haverford Road. And unless somebody specifically requests that I do so, I'm not going to read the rest of the description into the record. Okay. When last we met, I believe, the applicants had completed their case in chief. Michael, you had called -- Michael, how you doing? You had called Frank Tavani, correct?
Correct.
And that's where we left off.
That's where we left off.
So it's your case.
Thank you.
And your exhibits, I have P 1 through P 6, right? With P 3 being withdrawn?
Yes, that's correct. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, thank you very much again for your time. This evening, what we'd like to do is present those people who had granted standing and whom I represent and have them present their positions with respect to this application. I have a list. Hopefully, we can get through there relatively quickly. And I'm ready to proceed whenever you are.
Okay.
Thank you. For my first witness, I'd like to call Jacob Swan. Yes, it may be sworn.
Hello, Jacob. Please raise your right hand. Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
And your full name and address for the record, please?
Jacob Swan, 522 Oakley Road.
Okay.
Two Ns, yes.
Hey, Michael.
Thank you. Jacob, you're in representative capacity on behalf of the Brinford Civic Association. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. And could you tell us again, for the record, what your relationship is with the association?
I am the president of the Brinford Civic Association.
And we presented documents at one point indicating that you had the authority to speak on behalf of the Civic Association with respect to this application, isn't that correct?
Yes, at the second hearing, I believe.
Thank you so much. I'm going to allow you to speak, say what you need to say. I think that'll short circuit. Rather than do question and answer, I think it might be better for us to go into narrative. Thank you. With that, permission of the board, I'd like to sit down.
Sure. Go ahead, Jacob.
Good evening, members of the zoning hearing board. Thank you for your service. My name is Jake Swan, and I live at 522 Oakley Road in Haverford. I'm here tonight in my capacity as the president of the Brinford Civic Association. For those who are not familiar with Brinford, it's the neighborhood in the northwestern corner of Haverford Township. Our diverse neighborhood counts itself fortunate to be well-connected by mass transit, home to two great parks, a couple of schools, several places of worship, including one recently approved by this board, a couple of nursing homes, an art center, and a wide variety of residential housing. Part of the charm of the neighborhood is that we are --
I'm sorry, let me just slow down.
Okay.
You're waiting.
Part of the charm of the neighborhood is that we are in close proximity to both of the commercial centers of Brynmar and Ardmore. Everything we need is a short drive away. For those who so desire, many daily needs can be taken care of on foot or by bicycle. For many who live here, we have chosen to do so precisely because we have such easy access to so very much. The Brinford Civic Association was founded in the '60s. We currently have over 300 members representing about half of the households in our neighborhood. As stated in our bylaws, our mission is to, quote, "maintain and continually improve the quality of residential life for everyone in our community." The Brinford Civic Association counts among its members many residents who would be directly, negatively impacted by the relief requested by the applicant. The association is of the opinion that if the applicant were to be granted the requested relief, it would alter the essential character of Brinford, it would substantially and permanently impair the appropriate use or development of adjacent properties, and it would be detrimental to the public welfare. First of all, the addition of a convenience store would indisputably alter the essential character of Brinford. The stretch of Haverford Road between College Avenue and Landover Road is not a commercial corridor. Of the approximately 75 parcels along this stretch, 2/3 are zoned residential. Of the other 25, 18 are zoned for office use, mostly up near Landover and between College and Buck, and 2 are institutional, a nursing home and the SEPTA station. It is only the remaining 5 properties which have been -- which have commercial zoning, and these 5 are all situated in the row of properties in front of West Avenue beside the gas station. Of these 5 properties, 3 are used as offices for a film production studio, 1 is a sleepy nail salon with a large parking lot, and 1 curb cut, and the last one is the gas station. There are several of the properties along the stretch of Haverford Road which have been or are being used for commercial purposes. The Haverford Auto Center at 601 Haverford Road on the corner of Melbrook Lane, it's situated on a residentially zoned property. The Framers Market Gallery at 644 Haverford Road on the corner of Buck Lane, it's situated on a O2 zoned property for mixed office and residential. Lastly, the Mida Station at 733 Haverford Road between Preston Avenue and Rugby Road, it's situated on a residentially zoned parcel as well. One non-conforming commercial use on this stretch was recently abandoned, the Haverford Market across the street from the gas station. It had not been in operation for well over 10 years, and it is currently being redeveloped as a residential property. Not a single one of these businesses have a business model which relies on large volumes of clients who visit the business for only several minutes at a time. All of them have business models which are based on clients visiting the establishment for generally 30 minutes or more. At the automobile repair shops, while the drivers may not stick around for long, their vehicles can stay for one or more days. The proposed convenience store depends on a fundamentally different business model, which would rely on a steady stream of cars entering and exiting 700 Haverford Road for 5- to 10-minute visits. Based on the applicant's own traffic expert's analysis, the volume of trips into and out of 700 Haverford Road are projected to increase by up to 100% at peak hours. Despite the fact that some flaws in methodology were pointed out by our traffic expert, which most likely resulted in considerable undercounting, peak volume of trips in and out of the gas station could hit levels of over 184 an hour, meaning 1 car every 20 seconds. It's difficult to see how the board would fail to acknowledge that the addition of the proposed convenience store would fundamentally alter the essential character of the neighborhood. It should be pointed out that in 1960, when the Haverford Township Board of Adjustments, the predecessor to the zoning hearing board, was considering this case, they considered the use of 700 Haverford Road as a motor vehicle service station to be less burdensome on the neighborhood than a retail use. As stated in opinion in order number 14 of 1960, quote, "The premises in question are presently zoned in the H business classification, which permits retail stores, offices, hotels, multifamily dwellings, banks, and other commercial uses. And the board finds that the use as a motor vehicle service station would constitute less of a traffic hazard and would produce less traffic congestion or volume than these aforementioned H business classification uses," unquote. This fact was not lost on the Board of Adjustments in 1960. What has led the current zoning hearing board to see things differently? Surely, it is not the fact that, in the intervening years, Haverford Road was expanded from a two-lane road to four lanes. If anything, this would mean a busy retail operation would present more of a hazard and additional congestion. Secondly, if the proposed use is granted, it would substantially and irrevocably impair the use and/or development of adjacent properties. The intensification of commercialization and increase in vehicle trips, which would result from the addition of a convenience store to this location, would negatively impact the use of all of the nearby properties. Residents of West Avenue and Haverford Road will have a harder time entering and exiting their properties, not to mention accessing the high-speed line by foot. The desirability of the new residential property development across the street from the gas station will definitely be negatively impacted. The ease with which patrons can enter and exit the Framers Market Gallery and Base Code Nail Salon will also be affected. The presence of a congestion-producing retail operation will lessen the attractiveness of Brinford and the nearby areas of Cooper Town. While this would not be the first time that what is effectively undesirable spot zoning has resulted in the creation of affordable housing, it is certainly not considered to be the best way to achieve this goal. Lastly, the addition of a convenience store to the existing gasoline service station at 700 Haverford Road would, without a doubt, be detrimental to the public welfare. The 5-point intersection of Haverford Road with Buck Lane and West Avenue has been identified by numerous experts as among the most dangerous in Haverford Township. This is not my opinion. This is a fact confirmed by several different independent studies. If possible, I'd like to add that a couple documents be entered into the public record. Can I do that?
You're going to mark them as yours?
We'll mark them as Eric's.
Yeah. So I have 2. The first one is the Haverford Road Corridor Safety Improvement Project, which is being carried out by PennDOT. And the second is the Haverford Township Safety Action Plan, which was commissioned by Haverford Township Board of Commissioners from a company called CH Planning.
And I'm going to object. These are -- appear to be, it says, "public meeting, January 19, 2023," by Panotti. I guess it's a presentation of some sort. But unless Panotti is here to explain this, and they are the author of this, it's --
I recall that being brought up before as an exhibit.
What was brought up as part of the --
The traffic expert used it.
But he only introduced a portion of it, which was what the objection was. And these are public documents that are part of Haverford Township's records, and this zoning hearing board can take notice of those, considering the fact they're public records.
Where were they obtained? Where were they obtained from?
This, I can't remember. It's from Haverford Township website. I think they have a section for the road, the proposed safety implementation plan, or from PennDOT, which has a website for this project as well.
You definitely aver that you're not the author of that document.
God, no.
All right.
The second one is available, I think, on the Haverford Township website.
What's the second one?
It's a Haverford Township Safety Action Plan, which is a document that's an initiative that's underway, commissioned by the Board of Commissioners from CH Planning to the independent consultancy.
Again, I'm not sure who CH Planning is, or if they authored this document, but again, I don't have the right to cross-examine them. And it appears to both -- both documents appear to be like presentations, so they're short information on each page.
And have these been adopted by the commissioners, or as --
This has been formally approved.
Formerly approved?
Formally adopted by resolution, I think, in October. I don't remember exactly. In the fall.
It'd be helpful to get that public record, then.
Absolutely.
Because otherwise, I'm not sure what it is.
Well, we can identify. If I can identify for that, subsequent to this hearing, I can get to the identification of whether it's adopted.
Yeah, I mean, my only worry is that those documents are what they purport to be and are prepared by a particular agency or adopted by a public agency that's in their public record. You know, I get the can't cross-examine it. I also understand that, look, it would be somewhat hearsay, but we can allow that to come in and give it the due weight that we feel it's necessary, at least the board can.
Yeah, with the noted objection.
Yeah, with the noted objection.
I'm just looking through this quickly.
Yep.
I wasn't given an opportunity. Like, there's recommendations, elements, summary. How do I know which one was recommendation, or if any, the township accepted?
I don't think it's critical that the township accepts recommendations. The fact is that these are reports made on behalf of the township at the township's behest and made part of the township record is what's critical.
So you're not suggesting these are public records?
No, they are public records.
Okay.
They are records which were requested by the township and are made part of the public record by the township. There are obviously studies that were requested by Haverford Township.
And you're avering that as an officer of the court?
Based upon what my client advises me, yes.
But again, how do I know they weren't -- this is -- one is from 2023, and one is from earlier in 2024. How do I know there aren't four others, or that the township saw it? Townships get reports all the time, take it under consideration, but may not --
The board's going to sustain the objection.
Should I hand these out?
You can't hand them out.
Even to the --
I assume that I don't have to take an exception to that, right? It's on the record that you sustain the objection?
Yeah, yeah.
All right. Okay.
Yeah. One of the major reasons this intersection is so very dangerous is because of the Phillips 66 gasoline service station. As discussed earlier, a business model characterized by a relatively high vehicle trip count, which is located on a small parcel with absolutely no coherent plan for accessing for egress or ingress, or for internal circulation. Vehicles exit the parcel either into fast-moving traffic on Haverford Road or by cutting across West Avenue and both the westbound and eastbound lanes on Buck Lane. If the traffic signal at Buck Lane is red, they sometimes, but not always, observe the "no turn on red" sign and stop, blocking West Avenue and the westbound lane of Buck Lane. This causes vehicles turning left and right onto Buck Avenue from Haverford Road to back up, sometimes spilling across Haverford Road. The lack of space and the lack of a circulation plan on the site can also cause congestion at the pumps, leading to frustrated drivers backing up into West Avenue, Buck Lane, and Haverford Road, simply in order to exit the gas station. 700 Haverford Road in its current incarnation not only makes the 5-point intersection of West Avenue, Buck Lane, and Haverford Road dangerous for motorists, it makes it positively frightening for pedestrians and cyclists. The crosswalks are poorly marked, there are no signals for pedestrians, and the waiting zones on the corners are small, without buffers from either Haverford Road or vehicles at the gas station. At the same time, the intersection is the only place along Haverford Road between College Avenue and Buck Lane where it is possible to cross Haverford Road. For pedestrians, it is a critical intersection for folks heading to or from the high-speed line or from Brinford. To or from Brinford. This includes large numbers of students and employees of the Haverford School and employees of the area's medical facilities. Additionally, it's the only one of 2 crossings for residents of Cooper Town to access Brinford and vice versa. For example, my son and his best friend, who live on opposite sides of Haverford Road, have been constantly moving through this intersection to visit one another or attend practices or games at Polo Field or Cooper Town. We have all been very worried about them on many occasions. The fact that one of the very few township-designated bike routes starts at this intersection is a mystery, given how dangerous the intersection is due to the vehicles exiting and entering 700 Haverford Road. All of the safety problems associated with this 5-point intersection and the stretch of Haverford Road will be exacerbated by the additional of a convenience store. With the volume of vehicles entering and exiting the site hourly doubling, the hazards, the congestion, and the resulting driver frustration will increase proportionally. Is the zoning hearing board willing to take responsibility for the associated risks of serious accidents? The deterioration in the safety conditions for all users of this intersection, be they motorists, pedestrians, or cyclists, will undoubtedly be detrimental to the public welfare. As testament to the fact that many in the community are opposed to this proposed convenience store, I'd like to submit 2 documents for inclusion in the official record, which have been circulated following. One is a petition from 2023, when this case was first -- when the variances, the relief was granted, and there are over 400 signatures collected, mostly from the immediate area, but also other folks in the township. And a second petition was circulated in the middle of 2024, which is to the zoning board itself, requesting that you not approve these --
And I ask that they be marked as exhibits.
Relief.
7 and 8. So the 23 will be --
Do I hand these out?
7. You need to show --
I'm going to object.
Do I give them?
Sure.
To their inclusion. I have not been given these beforehand. Normally, we do --
There's no discovery in zoning, so --
No, I know that, but normally, we do provide some. Yeah, if you -- where are the signatures of --
And these are online petitions? So people --
Yeah, but I'm going to object even more.
Okay.
Again, I don't have the benefit of knowing how people were informed of this. I haven't read it yet. Or if they understood what they were writing. I don't have the benefit of cross-examining or signing. I don't have the benefit of cross-examining them. I understand you may put them in, but they should be given the weight, you know, the zoning hearing board should consider the weight they should be given without having the people who signed them here to be asked questions.
Oh, the objection's going to be overruled. We're going to let them in with the wait.
And I'm sorry, there was 2?
I think there -- yes, I put them together.
Mr. Swan, could you just go over again with the 2 R 1? I got the second one. The second one's about this case. The problem one is a prior case?
The first one was -- no. Well, it's also Z 23-17, when the relief was granted.
Original.
And the community petitioned --
Got it.
The Board of Commissioners to appeal.
Thank you.
Do I hand these out?
Yeah, we can have them marked and offer.
Sorry, what numbers do we have?
P 7 and 8.
The 2023 petition is going to be P 7, and the 2024 petition is going to be P 8.
Do I -- you just get them? And here's one for you.
These are duplicate copies, is it?
Yeah, they're duplicates.
So 1 and 2.
And the 1 and 2 are paper clipped.
Yeah.
The individual petitions are stapled.
Do me a favor. I just want to make sure I mark them correctly, just to keep the same thing. That's all. So which one's the 23? They all have 24 on them.
Put it on my --
All right, we'll go off the record. All right, we'll go back on the record.
All right.
Go ahead, Jason.
Further testament to the fact that the opposition in the community is strong is that individuals in the community have supplied almost 100 donations totaling tens of thousands of dollars towards legal fees to oppose this case. In conclusion, I'd like to reiterate that the community believes that the addition of a convenience store to the existing gasoline service station at 700 Haverford Road will alter the essential character of the neighborhood, substantially and permanently impair the appropriate use or development of adjacent properties, and be detrimental to the public welfare. This sentiment will undoubtedly be reinforced by many others who have chosen to testify today. This would be an appropriate time to remind all present that the burden of proof that the addition of the convenience store will not have the above effects is borne solely by the applicant. To date, the applicant has failed to provide any evidence to this end. So my testimony is generally done. There are 2 more comments I wanted to make. First, I wanted to say that zoning hearing board cases do not happen in a vacuum. Currently, there are several official initiatives underway in the township, including the drafting of a new comprehensive plan, the implementation of a township-wide Safe Streets for All study, which I gave you some documentation for, and a review of PennDOT's Safety Improvement Plan for the Haverford Road corridor. Approval of the requested relief by this application would contradict many of the priorities set forth in these initiatives, should this not be a consideration of the township. Secondly, I wanted to say that in many other zoning cases, including ones that I personally have been involved in, I've seen applicants present evidence of support for their intended plans from nearby residents. In a recent case in which a property owner was seeking a special exception to convert resident residents to a place of worship, letters of support were presented from many neighbors. This applicant has provided no such evidence. Again, thank you all for your service.
I just have a few comments. I didn't -- I understand when we're going to go through this, it's not a question-answer thing, so it's a little hard to object. I wouldn't object to anything. Mr. Swan, you're testifying just as a resident, correct? You're not testifying as a traffic expert or a land development expert?
Absolutely not.
Right. So I understand that the residents are going to give you opinions. My objection is that if you given the weight it should be given as a resident providing this information rather than an expert. He made a lot of comments and testimony about traffic and about other things of that nature. He's made legal argument. I didn't interrupt, but I just wanted to -- I'm not here to interrupt everything everybody says, but I just wanted to be known and taken into consideration when the board hears the testimony.
This is an opportunity for my clients to indicate what their position is. We're here as party protesters. We have the right to state our opinion. They're not offered as experts, as if they're offered as opinion of residents, which is that a hearing board is free to accept or reject, just like it's free to accept or reject the expert testimony. So that's why they're here. And I appreciate Berta Dett's comments about not wanting to interrupt and cross-examine. Obviously, she's free to ask questions of any witness who comes here, but that's not -- we're not proposing them as experts.
Yeah, just -- yeah.
Okay, understood. All right, okay. Thank you.
With that, do you have a question for Jacob?
Just how long have you lived at the property?
My property?
Yeah.
13 years, almost 14.
I don't have any other questions.
I had one question. Jacob, I think you were invoking the comprehensive plan process at the end of your testimony. Right? You referenced it as one of 3 things that --
Yeah, 3s are official township initiatives currently underway.
And just to make sure the record's clear here, I have 2 questions on that. Does Brinford Civic Association, for whom you're representing tonight, do they support the current draft of the comprehensive plan as it exists currently?
The question is which draft?
The most current draft.
They support some elements of the draft and some elements they do not support.
Okay. And but the draft is still in the works. It's hard for us --
The draft is in the works, definitely.
So do you want us to take stock of the plan? Are you asking us to sort of value the comprehensive plan in its current state? Because we can't really project where it's going to end up.
That's a good point. The priorities set forth in the comprehensive plan will most likely not change. Some of the very specific details may change, from what I understand.
But specifically in your neighborhood, to the extent -- I'm just trying to figure out what we're supposed to do with the comprehensive plan, because it's not final, it's still in the works. The last public, I think, notices that we've been getting, as a resident I get, not because of zoning, suggests that there's more changes to come.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. And so I'm just trying to figure out, what do you want us to put weight on?
The main priorities spelled out for the township in the comprehensive plan.
Okay.
Which have to do with --
Anything specific to your neighborhood?
No.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Jess?
No questions.
Jesse?
No questions.
Neither do I. Thank you, Jacob.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is Michael Rouse here? Yes. I'd like to call Michael Rouse. I'll try to get him to slow down. Yes, it may be sworn?
Please raise your right hand. Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
And your full name and address for the record, please?
Michael John Rouse, 750 East Haverford Road, Brynmar.
And Michael, thank you so much for coming this evening. You were granted party status at one of the proceedings, correct?
Yes.
Okay. And do you have a position with respect to -- well, let's do it this way. Where are your properties located?
We are in 750 East Haverford Road, which is in the corner of West Avenue, Haverford Road. And then we have all the properties behind the gas station, property owner, as well as the nail salon and the production company. So we basically are the entire block.
Thank you. Now, do you have a position that you'd like to advise the board of with respect to this application?
I do.
I'm going to give you free rein to go.
Thank you.
Okay, go right ahead.
So first of all, thank you for --
Subject to the board's --
Go ahead.
Okay, thanks. First of all, thank you for what you do. I've been a resident of Haverford Township for over 50 years. I played ice hockey right there. I, I played ice hockey right there. Uh, my father had his warehouse on Bellmead Avenue, all my cousins grew up around here, and, uh, so I know how important this committee is and the, and the jobs that you, um, have. And so, uh, in terms of our situation, we are, um, next to the gas station, uh, my properties. And I think the first thing that I really started to think about when, um, this matter came up was, is the gas station, um, a good neighbor? And I will tell you from personal experience, they are not. Many months ago, there was a gas leak.
I think I objected to this the first time around.
Very good.
You sustained that objection.
I'm not sure I recall an objection to a conversation about a gas leak. It's a, it's an impact on the property that's owned by this particular individual, so I'm not sure how that's not relevant to the determination of whether or not the use is appropriate.
Again, we are not changing the, uh, gas pumps. None are being taken away, none are being added. There's nothing related to the gas pumps that's changing.
I think the witness can testify as to what he believes are impacts to his property, but, uh, note the objection.
It's not an expert.
Yeah, but take it as, as opinion as a witness, not a expert, as you indicated earlier.
Okay, thank you. Um, I was just referring to the good neigh, good neighbor piece. Uh, so when this gas leak did happen, um, we were not communicated with at all until the, um, Haverford Township Police contacted us over 24 hours later. I had to evacuate the entire street. We had to move out, uh, at least two homes, uh, who were displaced, uh, and who could never go back into the homes, except for, um, two months later in one of the homes. The other home remained dormant and could not go back due to several testing and several things that had to be, uh, mitigated in terms of health and safety. I say this simply because of the fact that all of us live in this township, all of us believe in this township, and all of us communicate whenever there's issues and, and any concerns that any of us have about the area. And in this particular case, where all of us have been buying gas, uh, coming, utilizing the gas station, um, getting to know different people there, uh, never once did anybody make the effort to say, "We have a problem." Besides that, I wanted to just state that a number of, of things happened behind the gas station, which is trash and junk. And the fact is, it sits there, and then it spreads throughout, and then West Avenue becomes a place where, due to, um, not taking care of their property, um, it becomes completely messed. Uh, all the, all the trash and all the junk is spread out. No care and no thoughtfulness when it comes to being a good neighbor. The second matter I just wanted to talk to you about, I, I'm in the kids' business. I run children's summer camps up and down the East Coast. We have thousands of kids that participate. We work with several institutions, and our area is really, our specialty is keeping children safe. And I will say, the fact is that Haverford Road is a highway, and I know that we're not traffic engineers, but I would recommend if somebody from the township wanted to clock the cars, you're gonna see a high percentage of them going well over 20 extra miles of, uh, of, of the, of the speed limit. In addition to that, you've got Haverford School, Brent School Haverford, and Cooper Town School that are all walking distance schools from the gas station. If you add it all up, there's about 2,000 children that go to these schools that are very local. And I say this simply because these students, 2,000 of them, either walk, bike, or, are taken by car or bus. And then the reason why I'm, I'm painting this picture is because in ninth grade, I had the opportunity to, to attend Haverford School as a ninth grader after going to another school for grade school. There was a Wawa where the Lexus dealer is on Lancaster Avenue. That Wawa was a magnet for anybody who could sneak out of school at Haverford to get to the Wawa and get back in time before getting in trouble. You would see kids sprinting, you would see kid, you know, behind on Pymwood Road, behind that, the area of Lancaster Avenue, to, to try to make it in time to grab something and go. Uh, as we all know, that Buck Lane is also a shortcut for cars to get from Haverford Road to Lancaster Avenue. They do not go down to College Avenue. They shoot straight down Buck Lane. By putting a convenience store there at the gas station, you are creating a, you're setting up for a tragedy to happen. I say that simply because you have children who are thinking about, "I wanna get a soda," or "I need to get somewhere," and they're either gonna walk or bike, or their mom or dads are gonna take them in a car, and there's gonna be congestion, and somebody's gonna get hurt. We've had one tragedy happen on Haverford Road where, uh, a woman with their baby was walking across the street, and I believe they were hit, and I believe that, uh, with one other person, I believe a pedestrian was, was struck and killed, but luckily the baby and the, the mother were not. And this is a serious thing that happens on Haverford Road throughout the time of day when cars are speeding. And I just really worry when you, when you have a, a convenience store that is going to attract more and more people, um, some of them who, who are really not, um, guided by a parent or an adult or a guardian, and that would be a recipe for disaster. Thank you for your time.
All right, go to that.
Yeah, just a few questions. Um, are, do you, I, I think you said you own two properties?
No, I own, uh, all the, all the, the properties that are abutting.
The Sligo?
Sligo.
Sligo, good.
All the, all the properties on the block.
I'm sorry?
All the properties behind the gas station and behind the, the nail salon and the productions to you of that block.
There, there are the properties that are rented?
Yes.
And, um, you did get notice from DEP in reference to the gas bill that you were referencing?
24 hours later with the, with, it was the first time it was the, uh, police, police officer, 24 hours later.
No, I'm asking, did you get notice from DEP, the Department of Environmental Protection?
Yes, 24 hours later.
And, um, are you currently in litigation?
Uh, we were, yeah, and it, it has gone extremely slow and no callbacks, and in fact, the follow-up has not incurred until this month as a result.
And you're represented by counsel?
We are.
Okay. And how long have you owned the properties?
Over 21, 21 years.
I'm sorry?
Over 21 years.
Over?
Yes.
That's all the questions out here.
Jessica?
I don't have any questions.
Bill?
No questions, thank you.
Jesse?
No questions.
Neither do I.
Thank you.
Thank you.
With the board's permission, I'd like to call Michelle Brown.
Good evening.
Please raise your right hand. Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
And your full name and address, please, for the record?
Michelle Brown, 36 West Avenue in Brenmore.
Go ahead, Michael.
Thank you. Michelle, um, you've been present during many of the hearings for this, for this application?
Yes.
Okay, and do you have a position that you'd like to advise the board with respect to this application?
Yes.
And please do so.
Okay.
Uh, Mr. Yan, just a quick question. I didn't catch a tissue party?
Yes.
Thank you for allowing me to be here and voice my concerns. As a resident on 36 West Avenue, I am thinking about the detrimental effect a mini-market slash gas station, uh, convenience store can have on me and my family. Presently, it's a gas station, so people come in, they get their gas, they probably pay at the pump, they might go inside to purch, to pay their gas and maybe purchase an item while they're in there, but then they get in their car and they're gone. But as a mini-market or a convenience store, that's gonna bring in a different customer. And it is known that little stores are thieves' haven. They love it because there's few eyes on them, the, the security system isn't that sophisticated, and I doubt if there would probably be a, a security guard there. And the next thing you know, people are paying cash coming in to get their items, and you have a high cash volume. And people start thinking, "Well, maybe this is someplace that I could rob." I mean, that's just how I feel. And they come, they rob, let's say they get a windfall because there's so much ca, cash now because they're paying for things as opposed to using credit cards. They rob the store, they get a windfall, they come back, or they start surveilling the, the, the neighborhood, which is where I live, and I feel my husband and my daughter, and I would be vulnerable to those clientele, to that customer, who thinks that, you know, then they start looking around our area and think maybe that we could be a target. So I am not comfortable with it being a mini-market at all. I just wanna thank you for, for hearing how I feel and what I'm thinking about.
Thank you, Michelle. Bernadette, do you have questions?
No questions.
Okay.
Uh, Jessica?
No questions.
Jesse?
No questions.
Bill?
No. Thank you.
I'd like to call Jared Raynor.
Jared, please raise your right hand. Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
And your full name and address?
Jared Raynor, 317 Buck Lane, Haverford. R A Y N O R.
And Jared, you were granted party status, correct?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Do you have a position that you'd like to advise the board of?
I do.
Thank you. Would you please do so?
Thank you. Um, and I, my remarks are written down, and so if I need to slow down, please, uh, do let me know, um, as I go through. I appreciate the extensive time the board has given, uh, to this issue, and believe that the additional concerns that local community members were not able to provide for the board's consideration when it first considered this issue should cause serious reconsideration of the board's position on this application. I have three primary concerns with this site. Each concern, in my estimation, is on its own sufficient cause to reject the requested relief. However, should the board grant the requested relief, there are 10 conditions that I would like to encourage the board to put on the place in the event the relief is granted. I will detail each of those concerns along with my suggested conditions in the event that the requested relief is granted. My first concern is that the site, the safety of the intersection is already bad and would be made worse by the proposed changes. The proposed changes to the site would be detrimental to the public welfare. I don't want to bore the board with, uh, with going over what many have stated, but I can reiterate that the traffic issues at this site are dangerous for both pedestrians and for cars. My two primary concerns are for the, um, on the Buck Lane side, um, and on the closest side of the Haverford Road. On the Buck Lane site, you will hide, you will find cars that pull quickly out of the gas station trying to make a green light as they turn left onto Haverford Road, turn left onto Buck Lane, then to turn right onto Haverford Road. This last Sunday, I was returning to my home along Haverford Road and had one car pull out in front of me, another car stopped blocking traffic on Buck and Haverford, and a third car pulled out of the station and sit halfway in the street on Buck, blocking traffic. On the Haverford roadside, I have sat at the intersection on Buck and watched cars within the service, service station back up from the Buck exit so that they could turn directly onto Haverford to avoid the light, navigating around the pumps, other cars, and ongoing traffic. The addition of the proposed convenience store would worsen the situation by dramatically increasing the number of cars entering and exiting 700 Haverford Road, as well as changing the way that people use the business. The 1960 approval for the service station acknowledges this, as Mr. Swan noted in his comments. That 1960 said that a service station would cause less traffic than other uses, including a retail store. The proposed variance allows for the ongoing use of the service station, as Ms. Bernadette has noted several times, and as a retail store, which on its own would have disqualified the site from the special exception granted in 1960. While the safety issue is enough for the board to reject the requested relief in the event relief is granted, the board should consider these, these restrictions. Number one, streamline entry and exit to the property so that traffic flows are more predictable. Two, remove egress and ingress along Buck Lane West Avenue, which is technically prohibited by the 1960 conditions of the special exception. Three, should it be determined that the current egress-ingress is along Buck Lane, not West Avenue, prohibit left turns onto Buck Lane. This is not unprecedented, and several properties along Haverford Road have similar, similar traffic patterns in place. My second concern is that this would substantially alter the character of the neighborhood. The proposed shift in the nature of the business creates a shift in the nature of the place to increase foot presence. A service station services cars. There is little incentive to stop there if you don't have a car. The proposed use shifts that to include more foot traffic from the area, inviting more vehicle and non-vehicle presence. It changes the dynamic between cars navigating other cars to increasingly having to navigate other cars, shoppers who leave their cars, and local pedestrians. A convenience store also brings with it more trash from all those prepackaged foods the applicants have talked about. Trash is already something that gets thrown into the woods and bushes along the bridge and my property. By making it a dual-use consumer space, it changes the feel to more of a commercial market space in a location that is currently residential. The other nearby businesses do not threaten the residential character of the neighborhood. Again, negatively altering the character of the neighborhood is and of itself reason to reject the requested relief. However, in the event it is approved, the board should consider these restrictions, continuing my list. Number four, require beautification efforts on all aspects of the property. Five, require the planting of trees and sufficiently dense shrubbery to prevent trash from blowing off the property and to blend in with the character of the neighborhood. Six, require that the back area remain grass or other natural green space and require compliance with the terms of the original 1960 special exception. Seven, place strict limits on the types of things that can be offered and do not allow a blanket accept expansion of the convenience store offerings. Members of this board have seemed to imply in previous hearings that they are taking the applicant at their word of only prepackaged food and drink. The board should not rely on the good faith adherence, but should put clear restrictions on what is allowed so that the applicant doesn't use this variance as a blanket approval of everything that might be permissible under interpretation of this section of the code. Vaping products, alcohol, cannabis products, and games of chance should be specifically prohibited. Eight, pursuant to the 1960 order, maintain that no outside storage of any kind be allowed. My third concern is that the property has a long history of failing to adhere to code and to protect the community with its current use. The proposed expanded use would only exacerbate that damage to the community. The proposed changes would be detrimental to the public welfare. While I personally believe that a business should strive to have good relations with the neighborhood in which they reside, which this business has not done, has already been alluded to, I know the board may not see that consideration, or may see that consideration as outside of your jurisdiction. However, what is not outside of the board's jurisdiction is considering. However, what is not outside of the board's jurisdiction is considering that the current property has struggled to adhere to code with its current use, which should give the board pause as to its ability to adhere to code in the future under an expanded use. Let me provide three specific examples. First, in March 2023, the service station was cited by the EPA for reportable releases of a regulated, regulated substance, as we've already heard. Mitigation and monitoring efforts were required on the Cobb's Creek Tributary that goes along my property, which is on the other side of the tracks. According to the EPA, this followed issues in 2011 and 2020 of release of unleaded gasoline to soil and groundwater. If you walk along the Septa Drainage Ditch, you can see oily residue in the water in that area. While the leak and the remediation efforts were extremely troubling, the service station did nothing to reach out to let neighbors know what was going on. There was zero communication. The proposed variance would expand the scope of services permitted by this site and further distract the site from protecting the community around the core service as a refueling station. Over the last several years, there have been several trash and debris or car storage violations levied against the site, and I can only imagine that a market will bring increased packaging trash and further complicate what the business needs to pay attention to. It is unclear how the current site plan would be able to accommodate that trash and things such as pallets, large packaging boxes, unusable product waste, and consumer trash. What should give this board particular pause is that apart from the serious toxic chemical release, which came under the jurisdiction of the EPA, this business has been extremely slow to respond to Haverford Township issued violations. It appears that one of the only drivers for the business to make any efforts at compliance has been their desire to be granted relief by this board. Let me provide two concrete examples. First, up until a couple of months ago, there were two large storage containers on the back lot, as well as several broken-down cars. While I believe the site is still in violation of Township Code for junked cars, qualifying the site as a junkyard, a use forbidden in the township, the storage containers were removed at the end of last year, only following one of these hearings in which we were represented by council. Second, back in 2020, when the applicants were considering expansion, there were several citations issued to the owners, including removing outdoor storage trailers, removing a dumpster from the back lot, removing cars from the back lot, et cetera. The site was slow to respond. The resolution of these issues has taken repeated follow-up from the township. In an email from Joe Celia, the Township Codes Officer, to Commissioner Andy Lewis in 2020, there was a forwarded email from the applicant's architect, Mr. John Teetz, to the owners of the service station, where he shares how they had delayed and needed to comply or their zoning variance could not be considered. The email reads in part-
I'm, I'm going to object. I don't have any basis for this, or I don't have a copy of it.
It's not necessarily offered for the truth of matter asserted. It's not hearsay. Plus, this board has leeway with respect to hearsay matter. Hearsay is not strictly enforced.
I'll let it, just, just, I'll let him continue to read it.
Steve, I spoke to Joe Celia, head of Code Enforcement for Haverford Township. The issues are really simple, and he says he met with someone at the site a few months ago when there was a little action, but that now it is worse than it was then. He will meet you again if you want, but that will not change his requirements. Compliance must begin right away, and if not commenced within 30 days, you will be cited. Further, no permits for the canopy or the tanks will be issued, and no zoning variance for any store expansion or parking lot on that could be considered until all elements of this zoning order are completely complied with. The fact that this site is frequently cited for not currently complying with zoning ordinances should be sufficient reason for the board not to expand or change current permissible use. However, in the event the board sees some way that this variance will not be detrimental to the township, the board should consider these restrictions. Continuing my list, number nine, provide that the special exception will be revoked irrevocably should this site be found in violation more than twice in a given year. Ten, require the site to have a community engagement plan with residents within 500 feet of the property. That concludes my testimony. Thank you.
Bernadette? Questions?
I'm at the mic, yes. I'm sorry, I forgot your name, I apologize.
Jared.
Jared, how long have you lived at the property?
For eight years.
Eight years, okay. And what was the date of the email that you were reading?
The date from Mr. Celia is Monday, March 2nd, 2020. Forwarded by Andy Lewis-
Okay.
On Wednesday, April 29th.
Okay, that's all the questions I had.
Jessica?
No questions.
Bill?
No questions, thank you.
Jessie?
No questions, thank you.
Thank you, Jared.
Thank you.
Please raise your right hand. Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, or nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
And your full name and address for the record, please?
Kevin Daniel McHenry, 621 Haverford Road, Haverford, Pennsylvania, 19041.
And Mr. McHenry, you were granted party status earlier, is that correct?
I was.
Thank you. Do you have a position you'd like to advise the board of?
I do.
Please do so.
I don't think that there's anybody here in this room, and I don't think there's anybody on the board who's not aware that this is a very dangerous intersection. If council hasn't been passed there, you were probably speeding if you did drive past there, because everybody's speeding on that section of the road. It's just kind of becomes accepted.
You need to address just the board, Kevin.
Sorry about that. I was just, previously, the council had mentioned that she wasn't from the area, so I was just bringing her onboard.
Doesn't matter where.
I just have video from October 3rd of 2024 of the gas station being delivered gas at 1:26 in the morning. It's also being delivered by an independently owned truck. So this business is run, Sun Raw LLC. They own a few stations, they deliver their own gas. Their entire business model is to cut the price of other people's gas, which brings enormous amounts of volume into that community because they're always going to have the lowest price on gas because of the way they're delivering it. But they're delivering it in complete violation of anything going on in this township. There is no businesses that are around that receive goods at 1:30 in the morning in a residential community. It just doesn't happen. And if this happens in a timeframe where they're applying for variances, they're asking for things to be granted, I, I mean, you would think they would sharpen things up a little bit, but clearly they don't care, to the point of being a good neighbor, to the point of Mr. Rouse, who is a big owner in that area. I'm just a small person. I just own one home, I have four children, a family, a dog. I cited, the last time I spoke here, that this business isn't a good neighbor. They leaked a lot of fuel, let no one know. It's not a good neighbor. Someone who delivers gas in the middle of the night, it's not a good neighbor either. It's somebody who thinks we're all a joke, and that the board's a joke, and they'll do whatever they want. And I have a hard time feeling compelled to be somehow cognitively of somebody trying to make a living when they're really just walking all over a community. I keep hearing water and ships being referred to. This isn't really a place that's selling a lot of water and ships. I mean, you would think they would give data to support that. If what they're selling is water and ships, it's not necessarily what's stocked on their shelves. So if you allow people to break rules and bend them, and assist them in breaking and bending them, it's just going to keep going on. I don't, I don't see, you know, how else. And, and again, there is nobody in this community who has to be told that if the federal government asks the state through PennDOT to fund a traffic study at a road because it's that dangerous, man, it's clearly known to be dangerous in the community. And obviously, increased traffic, change of congestion, change of volume, i- it's only going to make a dangerous situation that everybody's already aware of that much more dangerous. And I appreciate your time and everything you do.
Thanks. Bernadette, question?
No questions.
Thanks so much.
Jessie?
No questions.
Nope. Jessica?
Questions?
Neither. Thanks, Kevin.
Thanks, appreciate it.
I call Deb Morley.
Please raise your right hand. Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, or nothing but the truth, so help you God?
Yes.
And your full name and address for the record, please?
Deborah Gale Morley, 320 Buck Lane, Haverford.
And Deborah, you were granted party status?
Yes.
And do you have a position you'd like to tell the board?
Yes, I'm, I'm really going to echo what you've already heard this evening. Words of my neighbor Jared spoke so eloquently, I think that, you know, we all have the same concern about safety. And Gina and I, my wife, we live in the red house right behind, over the tracks there. And I'm an active pedestrian in the area, as well as a driver, and I've had a number of very close calls at that intersection. The circulation of the way the cars just dart in and out and around is terrifying. And as everyone has said, that it's obvious that if the use is expanded, that there will be more cars, more traffic. I also have the environmental safety concerns as well. We already get some of the trash in our yard that comes over, you know, from the, from the ga- current gas station, and don't look forward to having more of that, or the additional deliveries and, and whatnot. So thank you for this opportunity to speak, and thank you for your service.
Thank you. Bernadette?
No questions.
Jessie?
No.
No questions.
Jessica?
Questions.
Neither do I.
I call Jeff Day.
Please raise your right hand, Jeff. Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, or nothing but the truth, so help you God?
Yes, I do.
Your full name and address for the record, please?
Yes, Jeffrey Allen Day, a resident at 708 Preston Avenue in Haver- in Haverford. Day, D-A-Y.
Thank you. Jeff, you were granted party status in this matter, is that correct?
I was, yes.
You have a position you'd like to tell the board?
I do have a position. I'm grateful for your, for your time and your service, I know this. And, and I'm grateful to my neighbors and friends and community members, some of whom I've just met through this process. I don't do this often. This was a compelling issue for me as a resident, someone who's lived on Preston Avenue for the last year and a half. And previously, I worked at the Haverford School, in Haverford School Housing, at the corner of Buck Lane and Panmure. And so Michael, and Michelle, and Kevin, and Deb, and so many others, and Jared, who've provided testimony, I just want to speak out in support of their concerns. I have great concern for the public welfare, for the safety in that intersection. I just want to restate that, like, I know we're talking about an approval or expansion, like, the current danger at that intersection, as a driver and a parent, married to my wife, Erin, and we have two children. Quinn, our son who doesn't drive, takes public transportation and is a pedestrian, and our daughter Phoebe, who's a driver. I mean, I encourage them actively at present, the way the current traffic and safety issues are right now, before any expansion, before any volume increase, not to drive Preston Avenue to Haverford Road in either direction. We go up to railroad and around. I don't even walk, I, I took my life in my hands one time trying to walk from my house, which is right, you know, three houses in from Haverford Road, thinking I could walk to my new job at Bryn Mawr Hospital after leaving Haverford in June of 2023. Almost took my life in my hands, I didn't even realize that there weren't sidewalks. And then another time, I was at the gas station and just crossing from taking public transportation, the high-speed transit line, and met somebody, saw somebody in the gas station filling their car with gas, waved to them, and proceeded to go to the intersection to cross. And that friend, former colleague of mine, stopped me and said, why don't I give you, where are you going? I said, I live right on Preston Avenue, like, literally, like, three, four houses away. And they said, why don't I give you a ride? And I would just sort of appeal to any community members that don't live in Brynford, and I'm a member of Brynford by nature of living where I live now at 708 Preston, and where we lived at 536 Panmure. That's what makes you a member of Brynford Civic Association, the fact that you live in a town, and you're a resident, and you, you either live by yourself, or have a spouse or partner, or have kids, watch them grow up, and you want them to safely walk and ride bikes, and eventually drive if they choose to drive, and be able to move around town. And that's what we want. And that's what Brynford Civic Association is there to help us represent, to bodies like yours, and to any and all operators of businesses. I thank Michael and others who own and operate businesses, and others who operate them responsibly, and communicate, and have our community's best interest, shared interests, and our families, and the welfare of those who don't live here but travel through here. That's what I want to express to you today. I have grave concern at present with zero expansion. In fact, I think there's major work that could and should be done, and I applaud the township, as I did before, for doing studies and traffic studies and safety work, and having a master plan to focus on the residents and the zoning that exists so that we can live in community. Businesses can be and should be where they are, and if they're grandfathered in, okay. But I read something at one point that we were going to look at grandfathered in or exceptions and turn them back into residential areas over time, that that was important at one point to the township. I applaud that. So keep doing the work on safety. I agree with Michael, I think there's a tragedy in the future, near future, waiting to happen as-is, with zero expansion, zero change. Please pay attention. Have our kids and our residents of all ages and our families in your first thought. And if you haven't been or haven't spent time, walk, take public transit, walk with somebody, watch, drive, just drive and park, watch the cars parked at angles, getting out, trying to make lights, even when you're driving the speed limit, or trying to drive responsibly. So that's my appeal to you. Thank you for your time.
Okay, Bernadette?
And I'm sorry, I didn't catch the address.
708 Preston Avenue.
Okay, and how long have you lived there?
A year and a half, June 2023.
Thank you.
And then, and then prior to that, I lived at 536 Panmure Road, which is also just up Buck Lane, Panmure, right near Haverford School as part of a job. I've lived in the community and been a member of the Brynford Civic Association since 2014. So 11 years now. All right, thank you.
Wait, wait, wait.
Oh, sorry.
Jessie?
No questions.
Bill?
I do have a question.
Yes, sir.
You talked about the lack of sidewalks. Have you talked to the township about putting sidewalks in where they don't exist? I, I'm guessing on the north side of Haverford, they don't have sidewalks, right?
Yeah, north side of Haverford.
And, and given the proximity to some of the schools that you, that you mentioned, Haverford School, Haverford College, Friends School-
Yeah.
-maybe sidewalks would be helpful, or at least improve the pedestrian experience. I, I don't know, I mean, we-
Yeah, yeah.
We can't control the entire intersection or that area through-
For sure.
-a single zoning case, but that's what the township can do for you.
Oh, yeah, yeah. So I have not-
Or the state.
I have not reached out to express that, but I will, it's a good reminder, I, I should use that voice and express that. I will say that I was not directly involved with this, but I, I was a fundraiser and worked as part of the administration, one of a 12-member leadership team at the Haverford School for nine years. You know, I know that Panmure Road, like, that, we looked at sidewalks and we appealed to the township. They're now parking along Panmure Road, which is one way in certain areas. The other section, the 700 block of Panmure, which John Williams and his wife live at, they did speed bumps there as part of mitigation and sort of safety, but that sort of 800 block, or 500 block of Panmure, there wasn't enough width to be able to put a sidewalk. So I mean, I do have experience, I was party too, from an administrative standpoint, appealing to the township in areas where there aren't sidewalks. I know that there are prohibitive factors, so I don't know if the north side of Haverford Road, where, where literally like the, you know, I think erosion and sort of the sediment that's maybe come out even over a previous sidewalk or something, I don't know if it's possible, but I will reach out and express that. The fact is that you end up modifying, the truth is, though, just, I mean, from one person's experience over an 11-year period and watching thousands of children, the same children that Michael watches, and others of us watching our own children or others in the area, you know, you end up modifying your traffic pattern and where you go, whether that's walking, biking, or driving. You just don't drive on Haverford Road, or you don't drive through that intersection out of some degree of fear and concern at present. I'm just telling you what happens for me and my family. We go up to railroad and around, and, you know, that's just what happens. But I will express my opinion to the township. Thank you.
Jessica?
No questions.
Okay. Thank you, Jeff.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. I call Gina Seasing.
Please raise your right hand.
Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help we God?
I do.
And your full name and address, please?
My name is Gina Seizing, and I live at 320 Buck Lane. S-I-E-S-I-N-G.
Thank you, Gina. Do you have a position you'd like to tell the board about?
I do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Yada, was she a party?
Yes.
Thank you for your time. I appreciate your service on this board, and the time that you've given to this issue for us. I want to echo some of the concerns we've heard. I also brought some photos to share with you. And I'll say that I thought initially I would stand out on the corner.
Gina, let me stop you for one second. Michael, you want to come up? No, no, stay here, Gina.
I'd have these board.
As P exhibits?
Yes.
Okay. Then, heard that? We'll go, hold on one second, Gina. We'll go off the record, aren't we?
P9, 10, and 11.
He wouldn't do it individually, collectively. I was just thinking, do it...
Do a P9.
P9 is a pack of three photos.
Heard that? Did you see them yet?
No. Am I continuing? Not yet.
You understand?
Yes.
There's at least one extra of this one.
Hold on a second.
Yep.
Hey, Michael, that's all you two of them. You have one. You have a set, Jess? Heard that? Any objection? We'll go back on. Sorry, early. Any objection?
I think we need to establish when they were taken, who took them, things of that nature.
We can do that.
Okay.
Why don't you start with that?
Okay. These are photos that, I can give you the exact dates after this, but they've been taken in the past couple of months during these hearings. And literally, any hour that you go out, you can see very similar photos. These show what our neighbors have been describing of the kinds of ways that people pull into the middle of the West and Buck Lane intersections. I also have another photo from today. I didn't bring copies, but it shows two cars nose to nose on the Haverford side.
We usually have to lay the foundation for the photos first, before we start testifying.
Did you take these photos?
Yes, I took these photos.
What date, what time?
In the past two months. I can give the exact dates after I can sit down and get the exact dates today.
I'm sorry, I've had a hard time hearing you. You said the last two months?
That's what she said.
During these hearings, yeah.
I mean, again, I understand this is neighbor testimony. Note my objection. I don't know the date or the time. Normally, I'm used to that. Who took them? Date, time.
Well, we told you who took them. We told you within the last two months, and...
Yes, but...
And I could give you exact dates later today.
Can they accurately depict the intersection?
Yes.
Can they accurately depict the intersection and the time that you took them?
Yes.
No objection from the limit.
So, I'd have a question about this. So, you took this from inside of your car?
Yeah.
So, you're the front car in the intersection with a green light in front of you, and you're driving with a camera in your hand and taking photos?
I took them at the intersection stop, before the light turned green, and then put my car into park and moved.
And so, I presume in the photo that shows the green light, that this SUV that's pulled out of the gas station?
Yeah.
I'm not sure it is blocking traffic in this picture. Is that what you're proposing, that with them having a green light and able to pull into the intersection, this car could easily have decided to wait for, to pull in right behind this Mercedes, knowing that they're going to clear the intersection? Is that, or are you saying that they were actually blocking the intersection?
They're not fully in the right lane. They're partly in the opposite lane.
But we don't know if they're stopped or they're moving in this picture. They have a green light.
They, the light was red up until the moment before this was taken.
So you took the picture when it was green? You took a picture when it was green, but you wanted to take it when it was red?
The light turned green as I was taking the photo, yes. You can ignore that photo if you want, but these show the typical way that cars are blocking the intersection. You can look at the other two instead of that one if you want. But any given day, today, there were two cars nose to nose stuck in the Haverford roadside entrance, one jutting out into the road, the two kind of locked head to head diagonally, neither coming nor going. This is, you don't have to work hard to get photos like this.
Yeah, I believe that.
Yeah.
At the same time, another photo shows you, again, in the front row at a green light with, taking photos behind the wheel. Is that, and I hear about the safety concerns of this intersection. I would just suggest that that may not be a particularly safe thing to do.
It's not ideal. My car was stopped at a red light, and then the car turned green, the light turned green, and then I proceeded.
Again.
Yeah. I understand the concern, and noted. Every hour of the day, this is what this intersection looks like. Every hour of the day, when I come home or try to leave my house, which is just on the other side of the railroad track from the gas station, it is hard to get up Buck Lane or off of Buck Lane. It's very hard to turn from Haverford Road onto Buck Lane. And as folks have mentioned prior, cars are coming right out of the lot of the parking lot of the gas station, and they're turning right onto Haverford Road without waiting for the light. And this is the current state. So our great concern is the moving forward we see in the expert report that the, that the gas station's representatives offered, that the numbers are likely to at least double per hour of cars coming in and going out. The congestion is immense right now. Walking as a pedestrian across that street is very difficult, trying to avoid the cars that are coming and going. So that is a big concern for us ongoing. And we live just under the overpass on the other side of the tracks, and right now, we already have folks going into the gas station, walking across or driving across that overpass, and throwing their spent containers into our yard. So we spend a lot of time cleaning containers out of the ivy that are the trash that exists now from the smaller mini mart that goes with the gas station. So additional trash that would come with the expansion would be significant. And I think as we're sitting here and listening as neighbors, it's hard to hear the characterization of selling more chips and sodas. If you look at the front of this gas station, what you see is that they're selling kratom and Delta 8 and lottery tickets. And the predominant things that they're selling are not healthful. These are cannabinoids and opioids that are concerns of the FDA. I worked at Bryn Mawr Hospital as an intern in the inpatient psychiatric unit. We had folks coming in who were having psychotic breaks from the kratom that they were taking, which is over the counter but not regulated and is an opioid. We don't want more of that kind of product being sold across our neighborhood. This really is a problematic kind of a business, and we don't want that expanded. Thank you for your time. I really appreciate it.
Okay, hold on one second, Gina.
Yeah. Sorry, it was at 320 Buck Lane? And how long have you lived there?
In May, it'll be 10 years.
10 years, okay. Thank you.
Yeah.
Jesse?
No questions.
Bill?
No questions, thank you.
Jessica?
Questions.
Okay. Thank you, Gina. Let's take five, ready. We're going to take a five-minute break. Quiet down, please.
Guys?
We're going to resume.
We're going to get ready again. Thanks.
Okay.
With the board's permission, I'd like to call Chris Gouda.
Okay. Chris? Please raise your right hand, Chris. Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help we God?
I do.
And your full name and address for the record, please?
Chris Gouda, 26 West Avenue, Bryn Mawr.
And Chris, you were granted party status in one of the last proceedings?
Yep.
Thank you. You have a position you'd like to indicate to the board?
I do.
Please do so.
It is very clear that I don't need to stand here and talk about the numerous safety concerns everybody has in the community on the intersection of Haverford and Buck Lane. I obviously carry that position as well, as somebody who lives directly behind the gas station on West Avenue. My property virtually touches the back of the gas station. Obviously, I have that concern as a sense that West Avenue, there are no options to leave West Avenue without interacting with traffic from the gas station or that intersection in any way. Whether you go out one way on the Buck Lane side, or go the other way on the Haverford Road side, you have traffic backed up from that, from that traffic light and the gas station. That is virtually impossible to make a left-hand turn on Haverford Road from West Avenue at any time of day, let alone the times that people need to, rush hour times. That is, however, not even my biggest concern. By the expansion of this gas station into a convenience store, it's the amount of other people that are going to be there. West Avenue is a very small, narrow, and quiet street. As a father of a three-year-old who does not get involved in this kind of stuff that often, I mean, ever, who missed bedtime and bath time to be here tonight, you should know how important this is to me. The traffic on West Avenue, people cut through West Avenue to avoid the intersection often. They come from Buck Lane, fly down West Avenue, which, again, is a two-lane road technically, but with very little parking, there's always basically one lane for cars to get through. It's a small, sleepy road, and I fear for, as the area for my daughter, the only place that she can ride her scooter, ride her bike. It's also, I work at ESF at the end of the road. It's, I frequent up and down walking every single day. The amount of increased traffic that has been cited by numerous experts that's going to be in there, my fear is that it will increase even more traffic on this quiet road, in addition to the safety hazards that are coming from Haverford Road. In addition, unfortunately, though I frequent the gas station, I cannot say that the gas station has been not just a good neighbor, but a good steward of the property. It's been cited by many of my neighbors, traffic, or trash, refuse, things all over the place. It seems to be a pattern that they only seem to do stuff, remove things when asked to, whether it's by the community or the township. Having more increased traffic, more delivery time of not just gasoline, but now goods, whether it be CBD, whatever it is, including chips and soda, water, all that stuff at all hours of the night, is going to increase the amount of people going in there and out, and going to increase the amount of people coming up and down West Avenue, an already small and highly trafficked road by other people avoiding the dangerous intersection. So I appreciate everything you're doing. I wish years ago, or two years ago, I had been a part of this process and known and been able to come and voice my concern at that point, but I was not way aware of it until it came back around the second time. So thank you for your time. I just, safety concern for my family.
Thank you, Chris. Heard that? Do you have questions?
A quick question. It was 26 West Avenue, and how long have you lived there?
11 years.
11? Okay. All right, that's all the questions I had.
Jesse?
Bill? I have a question.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, Chris, as someone who lives right there, is, would you prefer that West Avenue was one direction or was sealed off on one end? You talked about people cutting through. Would that help, or would that just make it, I mean, would that create other problems that you would be interested in?
It's hard to say, to be honest. The leaving, I mean, presumably, you're talking about blocking out the side that's on Buck Lane, right, the Buck Lane side. Seems illogical, right? In, in theory, that sounds like a great idea, except for it just then increases the hard times of getting off the road on Haverford Road on the other end, right? That's directly across from the Midas Station, almost directly across the street from Preston Avenue. It's, that is hard enough. So at least giving some interaction to be able, some relief one way or the other, does make it easier for those of us that are on that road, those, even my colleagues that work at the office, you know, down at the end of the road.
So, when you leave your home, do you have a preferred egress on, when coming off West? Do you more typically go over to Buck, or do you follow it around behind ESF and go out on Haverford?
It actually depends on which way I'm going.
Okay. So you essentially, it's a toss-up?
It is. But, you know, I will say, I try to exit more on the non-Buck Lane side because of what our, my neighbors have said, right? Leaving the Buck Lane side is a crapshoot, because people do not even acknowledge West Avenue as a road when they come out of the gas station.
And then, if we were to try to, think about it, like, a condition of approval that the curb, basically, that would normally, it's right now, it's wide open, it's uncurbed off Buck into the gas station, but if they curved it in a way that a car could only make a right turn onto Buck and head up towards Cooperstown, would that be something that you think would make sense as someone who's right there, living on West?
I don't think people will even listen to it. I think if people...
Depends, I guess, how...
How that curve is. I agree. It's really hard to tell, to say, just because of the way that that's all there. But even that, you know, there's people that are going to come down West Ave if they can only make a right turn anyway. Whether they're going well Buck, they're going to still come down West Ave, because if they want to go left on Haverford Road, they're going to come down and go left out the other side. So you're going to increase traffic down our small road either way on that aspect?
Well, I'm trying to think about ways that maybe we could actually mitigate traffic in the current situation. If we were to, you know, approve something, I'm just trying to think, you know, we can argue how much traffic will be created, probably more, whatever, maybe, but we can also think about existing conditions and whether it could be improved from a project.
Yeah, and I don't disagree with that there. I mean, look, it's been very made clear to all of us, we're not traffic experts, right? Like, I'm just going with what I know now, right? With the current situation, could something be done? Probably. But I'm not the one to necessarily make that, you know, determination.
I just was interested in some of the...
Yeah, yeah. I mean, I think even, even more so than it's, it's the traffic, but also, you know, people walking, you know, and that kind of stuff. It's a small road. And if you ever go down there, you'll see, it's very tight. We have a hard time backing our cars out of driveways when there's a car behind us.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Jessica?
No questions.
Okay. Thank you, Chris.
That concludes those individuals who were granted party status by the board. As I indicated, the board, there were a number of people who were granted party status by the court, and then here in presentation, the board decided that they were not to be afforded party status. My understanding is what the board wishes to do is to allow those people to speak as[1678.66]
That concludes those individuals who were granted party status by the board. As I indicated to the board, there were a number of people who were granted party status by the court, and then here in presentation, the board decided that they were not to be afforded party status. My understanding is what the board wishes to do is to allow those people to speak as part of public comment.
Yes.
So with that in mind, that concludes the, the neighbor's case, and the remaining people who I was going to call can come up and indicate their, their position in public comment. And I thank the board, as my clients have done, I thank the board very much for your time and your patience with respect to this matter. Thank you.
So with that, is there anyone present that received certified mail? Anyone that received regular mail? Please come forward. Please raise your right hand. You swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
And your full name and address, please?
Frank Spataco, and my address is seventeen Meadows Lane in Haverford. Yes, it's like a SPA, S-P-A, and then taco with two Cs.
What would you like to tell us, Frank?
Mr. Chairman, members of board, thank you very much for your service, and thank you for letting me be here. I'll make it quick. I'm a homeowner on Meadows Lane, and I'm less than a half a mile from the gas station at seven hundred Haverford Road. I pass it every day on my way to and from work, and it's clear to me and anyone that fuels up there that this is the cheapest gas in town. The affordability of the gas benefits, not only the residents like my family, but it also attracts people from the neighboring towns. These visitors spend their money in our Haverfords, supporting local businesses, contributing to our tax base, something that I, as a resident taxpayer, would like to see some more of. Having read the minutes from previous hearings, I'm surprised by the level of resistance this business has faced. If I didn't know better, I'd think they were proposing a tear down, a cherished landmark, and replace it with neon signs, and an industrial monstrosity. In reality, where I live and where I pay taxes, this application seeks practical, reasonable improvements to an existing gas station fully in line with Haverford's vision for growth. I'd like to remind the board of an objective in Haverford's 2035 comprehensive plan, specifically page 105, which calls for revitalizing older commercial corridors, especially along the Haverford Road corridor, by, quote, "enhancing the streetscape and supporting growth to create more of a sense of place and destination", end quote. A fueling station and a convenience store might not be the vision that was intended, but it's who we have, money in hand, at the door, ready to invest in the town. Urban development expert and Harvard economist Edward Glaser states that drawing people into a community begins with providing a reason to stop. Fuel is often the sole reason that people stop. With its affordable prices, this station already brings visitors to Haverford, enhancing it with a convenience store and updated operations will only increase that pull, encouraging more people to explore and spend money in our township. I understand that my voice may be one of dissent, but it is still my voice. The gas station already exists. The requested variances will not drastically alter its footprint or character. Instead, they will allow the station to better serve the residents and the visitors while contributing to Haverford's vitality. Progress like this should not be hindered by nostalgic resistance or what-if scenarios that protect the children. Progress doesn't erase history. It builds on it to create something greater. Haverford is evolving, and it's time to embrace the opportunities that come with that change. Had our predecessors stalled the development of sawmills and dime mills in the seventeen hundreds and the eighteen hundreds, we'd still be standing in untouched woods. While that might delight whimsical dreamers who envision a carless, walkable, zero-footprint nature preserve, it would surely dismay the thousands of residents, including myself, who now call Haverford home, and it would stand in stark contrast to the reality of suburban existence. I urge you to consider the benefits of this application and improve it for the second time, if not for the simple reason that I'm tired of getting postcards about it. Please let Haverford progress organically and resist the urge to enforce the will of a handful of deniers that have commandeered the microphone. I cannot control people's speed. Life is as hard as I choose to make it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Frank. Part of that, do you have questions?
No questions.
Michael? Jesse? Bill?
No, thank you.
Jessica?
Questions?
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Anyone else that received regular mail? Please come forward. Please raise your right hand. Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
And your full name and address, please?
John Williams, seven-three-zero Panmuir Road. Thanks again for listening to the testimony. I will try to be brief as well. Three things to cover. I've lived on Panmuir, up the street from this property, for twelve years, approximately, I think more, thirteen. I too share the, the traffic concerns. I drive back down Haverford Road and take a left up Buck to go towards Lancaster pretty much every day. Every time I do that, I am sure that I am going to be hit head-on in the other direction. And because the visibility is very poor there, and the way that people come out from the gas station makes me very concerned as well. It is incredibly congested, and I don't think this would make it any better. I'm also a runner. I frequently go through that intersection and experience the similar concerns. I don't see the reason for increasing the traffic at this area. Number two, I'm not a zoning lawyer, but I did believe that to get a variance, there has to be some kind of hardship. I can, I can't see a hardship here. There's been a gas station there. The gas station can continue. I don't see how there is a hardship. The third area of which I am extremely concerned, and I say this as a psychiatrist, is regarding the sale of tobacco and CBD products that would likely occur if this were to become a mini-mart. Many mini-marts sell illegally Delta eighty-eight, sorry, that was a, that was a car, Delta eight cannabinoid products. They are illegal under the Federal Drug Enforcement Agency schedule and within Pennsylvania. I have discussed why this product is sold in so many convenience stores with the Office of the Attorney General of Pennsylvania, and I have been told to my face, it's an enforcement issue. We have bigger fish to fry. We have fentanyl, we have heroin. We can't go to every store and take away the Delta eighty-eight pro, there I go again, the Delta eight products. This is near schools, it's near the Haverford School, it's near Haverford Friends. I'm concerned that this will increase addiction. As a psychiatrist, I see daily the psychotic and deadly effects of cannabinoid types of products. And most importantly, ordinance two-nine-nine-seven, I believe, that was passed last year, prevents a significant tobacco retailer within one thousand feet of an institutional zone. Bryn Mawr Terrace is an institutional zone within one thousand feet of this proposed application. I don't, and, and I, I have to believe that at least ten percent of the area of any convenience store would be devoted to tobacco-related products, which would make this use not possible following ordinance two-nine-nine-seven. So I would respectfully ask the board to consider that this will be a significant tobacco retailer and therefore should not be allowed. Thank you.
Wait, questions? Part of that?
Yes, I know I'm off mic. I just wanted to grab something. I apologize. Dr. Williams, correct? Were you here at the other hearings?
I can't remember.
I'm sorry?
I think I was, but I can't remember. I can't, I can't remember.
Okay.
I think I may have been, but I can't remember.
Just looking for the exhibit. Exhibit A fourteen was admitted, or was discussed at, I forget which hearing, but it's an email from the township solicitor, John Walco, dated August eighth, 2024, to the zoning hearing board solicitor that indicates the premises may not be used as a significant tobacco retailer, as such term is defined in the Haverford zoning code. So I wasn't sure you were aware of that.
I was not aware of that.
Okay, that's all the questions I had.
Michael? Jesse?
Good question.
Bill?
No, thank you.
Jessica?
Questions?
Thank you, John.
Thank you.
Anyone else, regular mail? Please come forward. And please raise your right hand. Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I sure do.
And your full name and address, please?
Marilia Marion, M-A-R-I-L-I-A, M-A-R-I-E-N, seven-thirteen Buck Lane.
And how do you spell your first name, Marilia?
Sorry?
Your first name?
Marilia.
Oh, Marilia.
Want me to spell that for you?
And your last name, then?
Sure, Marion.
Okay. And what was your address again, Marilia?
Seven-thirteen Buck Lane.
Okay, what would you like to tell us?
So first, to thank you all very much. I know this has gone on some time, and I really appreciate your patience, your diligence, and willingness to hear all sides and, and what everybody has to say. So I'm a resident of Buck Lane, and I live close to the property for which the variances have been requested. I live close enough to the gas station that I can easily see it. I've lived on Buck Lane for over twenty years and have appreciated the residential, family-friendly nature of our community. I'm speaking today in opposition to the variances being requested for the property at seven hundred Haverford Road to be turned into a convenience store in addition to the already existing use as a gas station. I'm a longstanding member of the Bryn Mawr Civic Association, and I'm very appreciative of all the efforts that they and my fellow residents have made to oppose the requests for these variances. There's a lot of local opposition to this plan, and I ask you to deeply take these concerns into consideration as you deliberate on whether or not to grant the variances. From my observation of the proceedings over the past year, a clear, strong case against granting the variances from a zoning law point of view has been made. So I'll speak really to what I know best, which is the perspective of somebody living in this community and directly impacted by the property and how it's used. When I first bought my home in this community, I was aware that there were very few commercial buildings, offices, or businesses along Haverford Avenue, and just as it is today, I could see that this is a mostly residential community with a pace of life and traffic flow that reflected that. This balance supported the livability of the neighborhood. I was aware of the gas station and the attached service garage. I observed the general amount of traffic in the area, that the station initially closed and turned its lights off at a reasonable time, and that the garage also had reasonable business hours. As far as I observed, people came, dropped off their cars to get work done, and then picked them up, and the garage closed about maybe five or six P.M. That seemed to me a reasonable arrangement for a business that happened to be surrounded by a residential neighborhood. In fact, I've brought my car several times to the garage for service, and I know from others in our community that it was a service the community really benefited from. By contrast, I don't believe we need yet another convenience store, especially one placed at what is already a very hazardous and busy intersection. It does not add something to, that the community needs. There are already convenience stores such as a Wawa and a Seven-Eleven close by, and there's an Acme the residents can even walk to if they want. Instead of having a car service station business that closes at five or six P.M., we would have a convenience store with constantly revolving traffic coming in and out until a store closed, presumably around ten or eleven P.M. This is not in keeping with, nor does it support the residential nature of the neighborhood or the livability of the neighborhood. To be clear, my concerns about adding a convenience store are around safety for myself, my neighbors, and the many people who drive and walk through the area to get to work, and the several schools in our area. I regularly take walks and drive in our area, and over the years, I've taken the high-speed line into the city for work. I can tell you from experience that crossing Haverford Road from Buck Lane toward the Cooper Town area, especially during morning rush hour times, is dangerous. I've been nearly hit a few times by people making illegal right turns or speeding to make a left turn. People routinely speed, make right turns on reds when they aren't supposed to, and speed through the stop sign on Buck Lane so they can make the green light and speed through the intersection, so they don't have to wait on what is an unusually long red light, actually, on Buck Lane and, and Haverford Ave. So the intersection is a known traffic problem where a relatively high volume of accidents happens. One of my biggest concerns about the proposal to add a convenience store to the gas station is that it will mean an increase in the number of vehicles that would be entering and exiting the property, particularly at high-use times in the neighborhood. According to the property owner's traffic study, there will be from forty-nine to eighty-two additional trips every hour during peak times. During the morning rush hour, the expected increase will double the number of cars traveling through. So by design, the traffic will increase, ensuring that an already problematic and unsafe intersection will become more unsafe. It doesn't make sense to grant various variances to a business that will likely make a known bad traffic situation even worse because of increased volume. This is not in the best interests of the residents and others who travel through the area. Another significant concern is the negative impact of granting the variances on the livability of the neighborhood. This concern is based on my own experiences with the current property owner's business practices. In the course of these proceedings over the past year, residents have made comments at zoning board hearings about this property, and even tonight as well, and their concerns about the owners not being in compliance with zoning or operating regulations. I'm aware, actually, that the zoning hearing board doesn't need to take into consideration that the property has a history of code violations over the years because being non-compliant doesn't preclude their ability to gain a variance. However, as a resident, this matters very much, and I ask you to consider this history to understand the large opposition to the variance requests. The pattern of code violations and how they relate to their neighbors closest to the property in particular suggest an inability to responsibly conform to the current level of privilege that they enjoy as business owners in the community. And now they're asking to be trusted with more privilege and responsibility. If they are granted even more privilege, their recent behavior suggests they will continue to have violations, and it will continue to be up to the community to hold them accountable for yet a second business, instead of them just making sure that they're being good corporate members of the community with the first business that they own. Becoming a corporate neighbor, and particularly in the unusual circumstance of doing business in a largely residential community, is a privilege and an increased responsibility, not a de facto right to have whatever one wants if they just ask for it, so they can run their business however they would like. Granting permission to make a property nestled within a residential community into something that is more than what it actually is zoned for, and in effect, hoping the space will be rezoned by zoning variance fiat instead of carefully considered planning, should take into account much more than the property owner's desire to increase the profitability of their space. As a business owner, I myself, I know that operating a business in Haverford Township is a privilege. In fact, one of the taxes businesses pay is called a business privilege tax. I appreciate our local businesses and believe that businesses have, businesses have the potential and the responsibility to enhance the quality of life in the community in which they operate. I also expect them to be good members of the community. Other neighbors have and probably will continue to speak to these kinds of concerns, and I'll just note one of my own from my own experience, which is that for about eight months, until neighbors were fed up enough and inquired as to what could be done about it, the gas station was keeping all of their lights on overnight. At midnight, at one A.M. in the morning, it looked like the gas station was fully open and ready for business. This increased light pollution was a nuisance when trying to sleep. It decreased the livability of the neighborhood. For eight months, it appeared that either this was a new company policy, or no one was minding the business well enough to see that they were out of compliance with zoning regulations, that their, their responsibilities to the zoning law, and simply being a good corporate neighbor. It was left to the neighbors to bear the brunt of the problem. It was left up to residents to advocate and get the property back into compliance with the rules of operation. I will say that the relief was palpable when they were finally back in compliance and the neighborhood was appropriately darkened by ten or eleven P.M. And for me, it was interesting to hear Jared's comments, because what I did notice is, the night before one of these hearings about the, the variances, was the night the, the lights finally got turned off. And the next night was the, was the zoning hearing. So the timing seemed to me to coincide with, they've been, somebody has expressed concern about how they're running their business, they're trying to ask for something, all right, we'll, we'll get back in compliance now. That should, that should not be the case. So my concern is that if you grant them the greater responsibility of operating, operating a mini-market, there will be more of the same lack of good stewardship and neighborliness, and the burden will continue to fall on the residents to hold the owners accountable. I ask you to take these concerns into consideration as you deliberate on whether or not to grant the variances. Having been given the initial privilege, the owners are asking you to grant them even more privilege without offering any realistic plans to address the current safety problems their space creates, and that having more traffic would worsen. If you're inclined to help and give the owners more responsibility and privilege by giving them what they're asking for, then please also be inclined to take this opportunity to support the people who live and travel through this community by helping to fix a dangerous problem rather than making it worse by giving, by granting them the variances. To do this, please deeply consider placing conditions for granting of any variances. This is important because the pattern of non-compliance with codes and the violations that over time neighbors have had to report- that over time neighbors have had to report to code enforcement to maintain the safety and livability of their neighborhood does not engender trust that once given special dispensation to expand their business footprint and be responsible for more areas for which they could become out of compliance with the law and zoning, that they will adhere to what's required and expected of them. They're asking for the opportunity to increase traffic into and out of their property with no real circulation plan for this increased traffic in a property that is already problematic at the current traffic level. If you have the opportunity now to impose conditions for the variances that could help make the change less dangerous for the residents and the people who work in this area. One example of such a condition relates to the problem of safety for pedestrians and drivers at the intersection of Buck and Haverford Ave. It is clear that traffic will increase significantly if they open the convenience store. Part of the safety problem on the property is the hazardous and poorly controlled flow of traffic in and out of the property. A particularly bad spot is where people come out of the gas station and make a left turn onto Buck Lane. They cut off West Avenue and sometimes hold up traffic that has turned onto Buck Lane, so they can't go over the bridge, and they're just waiting there. When the pumps are occupied and people drive in from the West Ave side, they sometimes have to stop and block traffic as they wait. One possible condition that you could consider is to suggest that they limit the ability for people to leave via the West Avenue entrance or block it in total. They could manage the flow of traffic in and out of the property responsibly by making it so that people have one way to get into the gas station and one way to get out. You could also ask them to only allow that people turn right onto Haverford Avenue as they leave the gas station, not a left turn where they cut through two lanes of sometimes fast-moving traffic, which I've seen quite often. So thank you very much for considering my comments and for volunteering your time and efforts on the zoning board. I really do appreciate it.
Thank you, Marilla. Bernadette, any questions?
No questions.
Michael? Jessica?
No questions.
Nope. Jessie?
No questions.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anyone else have received regular mail? Any other residents of Haverford Township? Please come forward.
I'm sorry.
No, no, no. I'm going to take my phone off.
Mr. Chairman and members of the board, my name is Brian Carroll.
Let me swear you're right.
I'm sorry.
Just raise your right hand. Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I'm a birthright member of the Society of Friends. May I affirm? I affirm.
You swear or affirm that all of the statements you're about to make shall be the truth and nothing but the truth?
I affirm. Thank you.
And your full name and address?
Brian, B-R-I-A-N, Carroll, C-A-R-R-O-L-L, 65 Meadows Lane, Haverford, PA. I've lived at Meadows Lane for 17 years. Before that, I was on Roberts Road. I have known the area most of my life. I'm a graduate of Friends School, Haverford, on Buck Lane Elementary School. I have not attended any of the hearings regarding this matter. This is my first time, so I don't have an in-depth knowledge of the history and really what the issues are. But I want to share with you my observations as a user of this gas station. Matt did some great service for me on my car. He's a great guy. They've done some great work as a mechanic shop and as a gas station. However, during my time going there, which is frequent, it's my main gas station, I see a lot of problems. Within the gas station itself, it's configured such, it's a very popular gas station, it's like a bumper car race. People, I've almost seen fistfights. It's very tight. It's hard to get in and out. You've heard about West Street? You've heard about Haverford Avenue? Haverford Avenue, I'm not sure if the expert report reflects this, comes down from a slope and a turn into front of the gas station. So when people are exiting the gas station onto Haverford Avenue, crossing traffic to take a left, they're racing against a wall of cars that have just been released by the light at Cooper Town and Haverford Avenue. It's like the Indy 500 start, coming right at you. It's extremely dangerous. I've seen near misses, and frankly, I've experienced it personally. It's a dangerous place traffic-wise on the Haverford Avenue side. On the West Street side, where I come over Buck, you've got all kinds of configurations being formed. People pulling out, they go through West and they get behind me, blocking all the traffic coming from Buck going towards Cooper Town. People going in and waiting for people at the gas station to finish their business. It's a mess. It's like a jigsaw puzzle of cars. And my concern is as follows. It's bad now. What's it going to be like to service people who want to pick up chips? I'm not sure what Delta 8 is, their water. It's not like we don't have a Wawa up the street, a 7-Eleven up the street, a CVS, a Rite Aid. They're ubiquitous. I'm not sure there's a community need for this, but assuming that that's not a factor, here we're going to have increased traffic of people coming by to buy these sundry goods. I don't think that this intersection can handle it. I think it's dangerous. And I'm concerned about more snacks, more retail space, more kids in the neighborhood. Going into an area with more traffic leads to a greater likelihood of serious accidents. Now I have some more parochial concerns, okay? I'm worried about overflow when people realize this is happening, taking a right on Cooper Town and going down Cooper Town Road into Cooper Town to avoid this mess. If you're going to cut over at college, just go down Cooper Town. We don't want that in our neighborhood either, and we have tons of kids because it goes right next to Cooper Town Elementary School. There's something else here that I'm not a land use person at all, but let me ask you a question. I mean rhetorically. Character of the neighborhood, not only do we have two of the four corners residential, I would call them deep residential. Behind them is more residential. We don't have a golf station or a 7-Eleven up on Pamir Road, right? Coming towards Cooper Town, we have a nice quiet framing art gallery, right, which has got low pedestrian traffic, reasonable hours, not big signage, not lights, and then after that you've got your high-speed line, but you have residential. Behind West, over the track, it's residential. This is an island, this is an exception. So what's going to happen if you grant this? I argue the character of the neighborhood changes. We now have a commercial retail store with high traffic, high foot traffic, high activity. So what does the owner of the nail salon next door do? Comes to you and says, "I want a variance." You've already changed the character. The character now is retail's established. You have to consider that in granting a variance to the nail store for what they want to do, right? I'm not a land use person, but this is the logic of what this test is of like neighborhood character. This is a domino. And these are people who escaped traffic, escaped congestion, left Philadelphia, earned enough to come to Haverford. And now they're faced with what? Let me say something. I go to that gas station night and day. I love it. It's cheap. If I can negotiate getting in and out, I go on off-hours, I still knock on wood, work from home. I've noticed there's some weird characters hanging around there. I don't know what goes on, but there's not people who look like they're from around here. I mean, they look like they're homeless sometimes. I'm not exaggerating this. And I know these kinds of stores attract people who may be looking for bottles to accumulate to get the five cents or whatever they can get, or other people who may be looking to have some sort of, I don't know, transaction of some kind. I can't be more articulate than that, but it's an uneasy feeling, okay? Of people who I don't know, who seem out of place, who seem desperate. And I'm worried that if this becomes more of an active area, this may attract more of that kind of, let's call it, element, okay? Let me conclude by saying this. People work hard to be here. Taxes are, you know, they are what they are, we accept that. We count on our government to protect our standard of living and what we've earned here and what we want here. We count on you to look out for us. This may not be a legal argument, but it's an argument where we need you to think about what our life is like under these conditions. I see no good following an expansion of commercial activity at that corner. I see additional commercial activity. I'd ask you to really consider not granting these variances. Thank you.
Thank you, Brian. Bernadette, do you have questions?
No questions.
Michael?
No questions.
Jessie?
No questions.
Bill?
No.
Jessica?
No questions.
Okay, thank you, Brian. Anyone else out there?
Oh, yes.
How are you?
I am fine, thank you. It's good to see you all again.
I need to swear you again. So please raise your right hand. Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
Yes, I do.
Full name and address for the record?
Dorian Saar, S-A-A-R, 748 Rugby Road. I want to again thank you for your service. I serve on the Shade Tree Commission of the township, so I know what long and acrimonious meetings are like. But I want us to not lose sight of the important ball here. One, the size of the existing gas station is half the size mandated by zoning. It is 17,000 feet when 23,000 feet are required as a standard. What the applicant is asking, and it is in itself a use, a single use, the ordinance says no two uses can exist in a C2 commercial. The adding of another use, which is the convenience store, which requires 4,000 square feet. So you take a parcel, which everyone has testified to is too small, and you try to shoehorn a use into it which requires 4,000. On the very face of it, the request is absurd. So I find it difficult to understand how this can even be approached. Further, the existing features planned by the applicant shows lots and lots of deficiencies in the existing. The minimum distance between any buildings, including accessory uses, in any residential district shall be 50 feet. There is property less than 20 feet from a residential building on West. The minimum distance between gas pump islands, compressed air connections, similar equipment and facilities, and any street line shall be 40 feet. There is 10 feet from the pumps to the sidewalk, and I know this because I won't worry with how I walk there. You can stand there and be sideswiped because there's not simply enough room to walk there. Further, all pumps should be at least 20 feet from the right-of-way. The plan shows pumps on the legal right-of-way and the overhang on the legal right-of-way. This is not, they asked you to change this to a vehicle refueling facility. A vehicle refueling facility only exists in C5, which is a shopping center. So the whole notion that this is a shopping center, which would be a planned community with regulation, is on the face of it absurd. Further, one of the interesting things about the plan that they suggest is they say, "Well, we need seven parking spaces for the convenience store." What they ignore on their plan is that the gas station requires two parking spaces. So instead of the seven mandated parking spaces, there should be nine. So that the six that are on the plan are clearly inadequate to meet the demands even if you should allow both uses. So what we have is a situation where we have a plot of land that is really inadequate and used improperly. We don't want to get rid of the gas station. We'd like them to improve the traffic. We'd like them to, you know, be more responsive neighbors. We'd like not to take our lives in our hands when we cross Haverford Road. But there is no reason to grant this special exception. The burden is on the applicant to show reasons. They did not demonstrate with anything but speculation financial hardship. So there was no evidence, hard evidence put into the, whatever the heck you call this.
Record.
Record, thank you. The record to show that financial hardship. So at minimum, when you speak to anyone who is just zoning, they say, "Oh, you can't get a variance or a special exception without proof of financial hardship." There is none. And there is certainly no, there is dimensional issues with this place. Now, also, the fact that they want to then put the offloading and loading spaces in the front further exacerbates the problem. And although I am too old to do well with the technology, I know from my experience that they have a 30-foot truck that comes in regularly to do the continued removal of gas from the water. So the EPA thing is continuing, and there is a large truck that comes at least once a month to do this. This is a picture of the truck, which I know you can't put into evidence, because had I known this, I would have done a better job with it, but it in fact is a fact. So in addition to all the kinds of loading and unloading that become part of a convenience store, then there is a picture, and since I took this picture because I thought it demonstrated the kinds of things that are being sold, is a picture of the front of the existing mini-mart, which says specifically, "We sell Delta 8." So they are operating therefore, although no one is in fact watching it, so they are selling an illegal product that's illegal in Pennsylvania. So that would be certainly a problem, which should be recognized by the township and not encouraged. If you look at the vehicle refueling facility, they say that the building area of any closure associated with the vehicle fueling facility shall be limited to a floor area of 150 square feet. The existing garage, or what they want to turn into the convenience store, is in fact in excess of that. So, and I have pictures which I can submit of the existing mini-mart, which show that in fact, more than 20% of their floor space is done for things like vaping and nicotine products. There were three, I go in there regularly because we all do. There were, I think, three paper towel products in the current existing mini-mart. When I go in to pay, I listen to people buying vaping products all the time. That seems to be the largest seller here. So I think that all in all, while certainly traffic is a major issue, and I walk to the Haverford High Speed Line regularly, and I take my life in my hands to do so, there are concerns that are overwhelming here, that are beyond simply traffic, and really require that you deny this special request for a special exception, simply because the laws of the state and our own laws forbid the kind of activity that's going on here. And township passed an ordinance that restricted convenience stores to certain zoning areas. That law was passed after this case was begun. So therefore, the township considered itself somewhat has stopped from doing anything about this. However, you have it in your discretion to take a stand that will follow the laws of the township. And I understand that the fellow from Meadows felt that it was important that we have business in the township. However, I would want to remark that at the end- However, I would want to remark that at the end of Meadows, you cannot enter from the prick into Meadows, because the people on Meadows really wanted something to stop the traffic from going up and down Meadows. So when, so when the issue of traffic becomes an issue for that neighborhood, they feel very strongly about it. So I think it's very nice that people want certain areas of the township to carry the burden of business. But do not put it on the backs of the neighbors of Brinford and Cooper Town, and do not put, do it in such a way that people suffer not only from traffic problems, but from lack of consideration of the laws that are on the books. There is no compelling reason to grant this special exception. So please follow the law. And I would also ask that, although I was not granted party status by you, I was granted party status through the Delaware County Court. And I would like to be recognized, because I would like to preserve my rights to appeal this decision if you do not deny this request.
Questions, Bernadette?
No, no questions.
Michael? Jessica?
No questions.
Bill?
Nothing.
Jessie? Please raise your right hand. Do you swear to tell the truth? All the truth and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
Yes, I do.
And your full name and address, please?
Cecilia Johnson Donlap, 760.
Wait, wait, Cecilia. I write quickly, but what's your address, Cecilia?
760 Buck Lane.
And what would you like to tell us?
I would like to thank you for your service and your patience, and appeal to you to listen to the voices of my neighbors in Brinford and deny this. I don't have to reiterate our concerns regarding the traffic and safety, but I will speak as a psychiatrist, as a mother, and as a resident of Haverford Township.
Are you a practitioner by any chance?
No. And say that the sale of Delta-8 and kratom is not safe. It is not wanted. It is not welcome. We already have established that granting this variance would increase traffic to my neighborhood, to my street. But what kind of traffic are we asking for? We're asking for people that are purchasing Delta-8 and kratom. Delta-8 is a cannabinoid. Kratom is a plant, or made from a plant, that is grown in Southeast Asia and is quickly becoming the new addiction for people that are trying to come off of their opiate addiction. I don't want that traffic in my neighborhood. And I don't think that we need that traffic in Haverford Township. I don't need to repeat anything else. Everything else that my neighbors have said, I echo and agree with. Please hear our concerns.
Bernadette, questions? Michael? Jessica? Jessie?
No.
Bill?
Yeah, I have a question.
Cecilia?
So I just wanted to ask, you said we don't want that kind of traffic. What kind of traffic are you talking about? People who are in recovery?
I'm talking about people traveling to purchase a illegal substance or purchase substance that they are addicted to or that they have become psychotic from. Yeah, not, not, not in recovery. No.
It sounded like you had said that some people use one of these products to come off of opiate addiction.
People are abusing kratom as a substitute for opiates. They can't get Suboxone.
So people, that's not something that they prescribe to help?
No, no.
Thank you. Anyone else that received regular mail? Regular mail? Did you receive a notification of this hearing?
Oh, of course. Yes. Thank you.
Do you swear to tell the truth? All the truth and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
And your full name and address, please?
Dr. Frederica Mann Friedman, 815.
I'm going to give you a second with that one.
Oh.
Frederica?
F-R-E-D-R-I-C-A, Mann, M-A-N-N, Friedman, F-R-I-E-D, M-A-N-N. 815 Buck Lane, Haverford, 19041.
Go ahead, Frederica. What would you like to tell us?
Thank you. First, I want to thank all of you. I mean, your time and your attention to listening, and I think everybody wants the best for our township and our communities. And I would have to say, I also think that the people who want to build this resource for themselves, even though we are against that, and we've, and we've given you the reasons for it, that they also don't mean to do us any harm, and I thank everybody. I am in agreement with everybody who has spoken on behalf of denying the variance, both my colleagues in the medical field and psychiatric field as well, as residents in many different fields. We're all in the same community. We want the same thing, which is safety and, and life for our children, our parents. And I think we've also forgotten, some of us are much older. We want safety for our elderly, our parents, our grandparents, our great-grandparents, who live in our neighborhoods. I don't need to address anymore about the issues of congestion. You've certainly heard tons of information. However, I do have a personal story that I came to share with you. I hope you will allow me to do it. I fear, I'm very tired. I've been working all day long. I'm probably, not nearly as eloquent as my neighbors. However, I'll try to keep it short for you. I wanted to give you a little bit of a preamble. My son, David Levin, we have different names, I know, lived with me. I've lived in, on Buck Lane for 13, almost 14 years now. He lived with me for the last seven years. He had his first brain tumor when he was 13 years old. Went to Episcopal Academy. He was number one in his class with a 200 IQ, and he gets a brain tumor. Well, that's all right. You don't have to be smart to get one. You don't have to be dumb. Everybody counts. Four brain operations, brains infections, 5,000, 5,000 rads of radiation therapy, and this went on for four years. And he was like, could barely move, et cetera. I retrained him. He went back to Episcopal his senior year, graduated with honors, and went to Harvard the next year at the age of 17. I say this not to brag about him. If he can do it, anybody can do it. He's just one human being. We all have our goals and our potential to do more in life. That's part of what I'm talking about, which is life and death. I'll get to that. He moved in with me, because 35 years later, he got another brain tumor. In between, he had brain infections and started getting seizures. However, he taught part-time in ethics and political science, for which he had worked on his doctorate on teaching fellowship at American University. He taught at Delaware County Community College for ethics in political science and politics, also at Philadelphia University. And he kept on doing this until, all of a sudden, one day, he didn't wake up. I could not rouse him. Nothing. He was breathing. He looked very handsome. He had his hands over his chest, lying there, the age of 48. I called 911. This is where we get involved with your commission. I called 911. They were there in three minutes, and they said he had no oxygen. He wasn't going to make it. They weren't going to revive him. I said, yes, you are going to revive him. I'm a neuropsychologist. This is my field. No, we don't allow, and I'm not God. I don't believe in death until it happens to somebody else over me who makes those decisions. Where there is life, I go for it. They gave him oxygen immediately, transferred him immediately by ambulance to Bryn Mawr Hospital. I live on Buck Lane, as you know. The road that the ambulance took to get to my home, where my son was basically dying or dead, is Haverford Road. They come up Haverford Road, then the ambulance goes up Haverford Road, very, very quickly, to Bryn Mawr Hospital, where they gave him more oxygen and saved his life. They said if he hadn't gotten there in that amount of time, they would not have been able to save him. He was actually in ICU for three weeks, still not coming out of that coma that he was in. Obviously, he eventually, well, he eventually came out of it in a week, and four weeks later started to walk. And then another week later, he came home. He would have been dead if the ambulance had not gotten there quickly to give him the oxygen. He would have died on the, on the way to the hospital if he hadn't gotten quickly to Bryn Mawr Hospital. This was my story, and it's why I wanted to tell you. Because, yes, it's my son, but we have lots of children in our neighborhood. By the way, after he came home, he could not walk very well. He had seizures off and on after this time, and he couldn't use the computer himself. But for his doctorate work, he had written 14 amendments to the United States Constitution to expand civil rights and human rights for all American citizens. One of those rights, of course, being health care, because his motto was, "Life is enough." And if you're not alive, you can't do anything. So taking care of the health of everybody was important. Now, he got another brain tumor, which is what caused these seizures and caused him to stop breathing. But he stayed alive thanks to, he actually had three ambulances, comes to the house three times. He went into comas. They got him to Bryn Mawr Hospital, and they saved his life three times. And during that period of time, he dictated to me revisions to his doctoral dissertation to expand civil rights and human rights. I will tell you, it was 28 pages long. He wanted me to send it to all the senators and congressmen and the President of the United States, because I felt it was very important. That's the work he had dedicated his life to, which was to expand the health and the welfare and the rights for all citizens. And I told him, "I'm sorry, nobody reads 28 pages anymore. If you can revise it to one page, I will send it." This kid, who had died three times and went to ICU for three weeks at a time, and whose life was saved by those ambulances getting him to Bryn Mawr Hospital long enough for him to put all the tubes in him, where he was on all these tubes for three weeks, not moving. You could have cut his arm off. He wouldn't have felt it. And then he came around because he was saved by the hospital and originally by the ambulance. So he got it to one page. He dictated to me. I'm not a great typist, but I play the piano, so I can do a little. I sent it off to a number of senators, congressmen, and to the President of the United States of America. That was Joe Biden at the time. Two and a half months before my son passed away, finally, he lived another five years, thanks to those ambulances. That's specifically that first one. But two and a half months before he passed away, President Biden sent him a commendation for the work he had done to help provide better life for everyone in the United States. I'm not bragging about him. I think every human being, every child, certainly all of you on the board here, my neighbors here, everybody has talents that they are working on and contributing to our communities and communities around the country. But this was five extra years that he got to do this. That's been recognized. All right, we don't have the amendments to the Constitution. That's true. But they're out there, and we're still working on making, in his honor, he gave me this pin, so it helps my spirit soar and keeps on inspiring to keep on trying to make life better for all of us here. The point I'm really making, as I thought about this after coming to all these hearings, was if we had any more congestion, excuse me, if we had any more congestion on the streets at Haverford, because the ambulance has come up Haverford Road. They go to Bryn Mawr Hospital on Haverford Road. You can't go on the little tiny streets in between to get there. His life wouldn't have been saved, and he would have died five years earlier. I thought about that a lot. Do I have documentation of it? Well, I will tell you that the head of every apartment at Bryn Mawr Hospital came to the IUCU to save me, to thank me for saving his life, because they didn't think he would make it. Now, my son is no longer here, but he's watching, maybe. He's in my spirit. And he knows that, we have so many more children on our streets now on one corner of Walnut Lane and Buck, and they're walking and they're running. I know we have wonderful dogs, Toma. No, I'm a dog lover. But every one of those children's lives counts. They can fall off the, from the sliding board. They can get a concussion. And if that happens, they need that ambulance to get there. We get any congestion there, an accident, I know we talked about congestion. You've heard tons and tons. But what is the result of congestion? Who cares? Who cares if you get late where you have to go, and that lateness can cause death? That getting there on time, having clear roads where your ambulance can get to you. The lady down the street has had the ambulance come three times in the past year. That's a life saved. Sometimes it's a child falling off a sliding board, maybe getting a concussion, and they need immediate care. They can't wait five minutes or a half hour. So that's what I was thinking about, and that's what concerned me with the congestion, is how it can affect the lives of the children in our neighborhood, the parents, the elderly people. Just this woman down the street, she had a stroke. You don't get the ambulance there in time, she dies. You need oxygen to live. That's just a fact. And I think that's a very important consideration. Haverford Road is the only main way to get to Bryn Mawr Hospital. It's the closest. That's for emergencies. It's not a convenience, but it can save lives. It saved my son. And I think every single person in our community is just as important as my son. I appreciate their lives, and I hope that we will keep the neighborhood safe for them. Thank you. I hope I wasn't too long.
Thanks for sharing.
Do you have any?
Bernadette? Michael?
Any questions?
Jessie? Bill? Jessica? Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for your attention, and I wish you all good health, long life.
And you too.
Thank you.
Anyone else that, so we're beyond people that receive regular mail, so any other resident? Now, I was hoping to, that we could finish this case tonight. 11, maybe 11:05 is our cutoff, but please come forward. Please raise your right hand. Do you swear to tell the truth? All the truth and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
And your full name and address for the record, please?
My name is Anita Eng. The last name is spelled E-N-G-H. I live at 164 Moreland Avenue in Haverford Township. It's the Cooper Town neighborhood. I'm here today because I'm in, I'm in the Cooper Town neighborhood, and I just want to speak to how this affects those people, even though we're not immediate neighbors of that gas station. How that intersection operates does affect the daily lives of all of us. I obviously drive through it every single day, but I also walk through that intersection. I'm an avid cyclist and walker, and so I do walk through that intersection at least four times a week, but sometimes many, many more times. So how it affects our lives is that my kids really also love to walk and bike, and they like having their independence and visiting their friends. In the Cooper Town neighborhood, they can do that, because the streets are designed in such a way that it is safe, and, and they can do that on their own, once they're like about fourth or fifth grade. What's really sad is that they all go to the same school with people who are in the Brinford neighborhood. They cannot get there safely by themselves because of that intersection at Haverford and Buck Road. I'm one of the residents who is working with the township commissioners and participating in the Safe Streets Program, trying to get, you know, more bike lanes, more sidewalks, perhaps a road diet for Haverford Road, all of these things with the, in, to try to get that intersection safer. And I feel like if we put more volume in that intersection, it's just an uphill battle. It'll make it that much harder to make it safer for pedestrians and walkers. So my kids are not allowed to go through that on their own until they're like well into their teens. And even at that point, they are not allowed to do it anywhere near dusk or at night, because we've all had a lot of near misses, me personally especially, since I go through it so often. And so it's limiting their mobility, their ability to see their friends. They also go to camps over there. So there's the Mainline Art Camp, there's the ESF Camp, there's camps at Haverford College, there's the pool at Haverford College, there are soccer games at the polo field, there's frisbee games at Preston Park, there's the playground at Preston Park. All these are things that I bike to with my kids regularly, but I do doubt sometimes my own wisdom in letting them go, in letting, in going through that intersection with them as it is, which is why I'm advocating for it to be made safer by the township. But at this time, adding more volume... But at this time, adding more volume before we've had the chance to, to make those changes to the streets, to make that a safer intersection, it will really have a tremendously negative impact, and it will mean that I probably won't be able to bike through with my kids as I do now, taking my life in my own hands as it is, you know? I won't be able to do that any further, and it will just limit us more. I think people come to this township not because there's a gas station, but because their kids can ride around on their bikes on their own and have independence and have a wonderful childhood. So anyway, thank you for letting me speak. We'll let you get on with it.
Thank you, Anita.
Any questions?
Bernadette, Michael? Jesse? Bill? Jessica?
I actually have one question.
Yes.
Is there an intersection on Haverford Avenue that you consider to be safe?
So here's the trick. So from Cooperstown neighborhood, if we want to get over into Brynford, we basically have Landover Road and we have, and we have Buck Lane, right? Landover is super dangerous getting to the intersection that goes across Haverford Road. However, how, it, the intersection itself there going across Haverford Road is a little bit safer, it's a little bit better designed, there's a pedestrian cross, there's a pedestrian crosswalk that works a little bit better. The intersection with Bryn Mawr also a little bit better, have also had near misses there with my kids on bikes, to be quite honest with you. Partly, it's the lack of pedestrian signal, partly, it's the lack of sidewalks, it's the lack of bike lanes, and it's, as someone mentioned before, people coming around the curve and sort of not being able to see ahead of time that there are pedestrians there. There's a lot of issues there that with some, that with some redesigning, I think could actually make it a lot safer. So I do think that Landover and Bryn Mawr are a little bit safer. Still not awesome, because Haverford Road is a challenge in its current state without a road diet, but if we could at least get them to be, it to be as safe as those other two, it would be a massive improvement. The trouble with Landover Road is going under the tracks from Cooperstown, there's absolutely no sidewalk, no bike lane, it's like really tight, so you can't go through with your kids there very easily or safely either, which is why we actually prefer to take Buck Lane, because it's wider for most of the way. It's just that one intersection that is the sticking point to me and my kids actually being able to ride our bikes all the places we would like to on a regular basis. And, and a barrier to my kids to make it on their own, essentially. I have to go with them, I have to be super vigilant when I go through.
Thanks.
Can I just ask?
Yes.
You mentioned that you work with the township on approaching pedestrian enhancements and safe streets.
Yeah.
Particularly for this intersection. How long have you been working with the township on this intersection, the issues that you've identified?
So like, it's gone back quite a few years. When we, I'm trying to remember how many years, when we had like PENDO come in and do the whole evaluation, and we had the Safe Streets focus groups, and then, but we've been in dialogue with our commissioners for even longer than that, trying to get them to get that process moving, so.
Five years?
Five years. I think five years. I just put my hand up, though, saying it was the truth and nothing but the truth, and I don't have documentation with me, so I don't want to like say the wrong word, but I.
At least five?
At least five.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, for sure. Anyway, anyway.
Thank you.
Okay.
Any other residents? You'll go next, you, ladies first.
Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Full name and address, please.
Ellen Harvey, H-A-R-V-E-Y, 756 Rugby Road. Well, I thought I would start with a little story to, to illustrate the issues that have been identified tonight. I live at Rugby Road. Rugby, you can walk down Haverford and attempt to cross the street by the gas station to go across to Basin Nail, if that's where you want to go, the nail spot. I had surgery November of 2023, and I couldn't drive my car, and I couldn't cut my toenails. So the help I needed was at Basin Nail. And so to get there, however, I had to walk. And so I walked down Haverford Road, and I walked to the light there, and I waited for the light to change, and three times I had to wait for the light to change. I had a cane, as my neighbor Doreen now has, and every time I started, the cars coming out of the gas station, turning left onto Buck, turning left onto Haverford, came whipping through without paying any attention to a person who was trying to cross the street. Now, Pennsylvania is supposed to be a pedestrian state, and so, and I've had conversations with the police about here, but cars coming out there don't pay attention to pedestrians. When I finally got across the street to the gas station and attempted to walk, because there's no real sidewalk there, as Doreen has explained, over to Basin Nail, I was almost hit twice. And I know you're going to question, Bridget, I'm sorry, is that your name? Okay, well, in case Bridget wants to question, it was December 14th at 6:00 PM of 2023. And so I finally made it to Basin Nail, and the folks at Basin Nail said to me, "You walked here? You took your life in your hands walking there." And the woman who helped me said, "I'll drive you home so that you don't have to go through that again." Now, you're in a situation where if you approve a convenience store there, there are potentially going to be a lot of cars, but there are potentially going to be people walking. And the only light is there at that corner. You asked about other corners. Landover is a very good intersection, but as was described, there is no sidewalk going underneath the bridge. So really, for anybody in either area, you have to go, I'm sorry, am I, am I holding you up? I'm sorry.
Very capable vice chairman that's going to take the meeting. You can continue.
Oh.
The trans, the hearing's still going on.
Oh, and you'll be sure to hear my testimony? Okay, all right, sorry. So there's going to be a lot of foot traffic from anybody in the neighborhood who wants to make use of that convenience store, and I'm sure you gentlemen want, lots of people and the neighbors to come, you know, I've, I've gone to your gas station a lot, or I used to, until the Volkswagen people told me it was ruining my car, and so I had to switch.
You're adjusting the board.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, I keep forgetting that.
Yeah, I know.
So, anyway, I just think it's important for you to know how dangerous it is for foot traffic going into that store. And I think right now, we have this Safe Streets effort, we have the road diet effort, and I think that, I'm sure, you, you've all have taken an oath for this position, and you've taken on a lot of heavy responsibility here, because if you create a situation where, heaven forbid, someone is hit crossing the street there, it's, it's because of the convenience, if they get hit because they are crossing the street to go to the convenience store, it's potentially on you, because you made that decision. So I know that you are in a position where, you know, this is a heavy responsibility, and I appreciate that very much. But I, I think you, you need to be thinking about the foot traffic and the impact that having the convenience store is going to be there, in addition to all of the other points that were made tonight about the quality of their compliance in general, their good neighbors not being good neighbors, the various needs for additional parking spaces, all the other items that were, were brought up tonight. And so I know that you have a serious responsibility here, and I really appreciate your taking the time to, to listen to us, and I, I think there are others who would like to speak as well. Thank you.
Bernadette?
No question.
No question. Jesse? Jessica? Thank you. Sounds like there's, yep, sir, you want to come up? We'll, we'll get to you that next, ma'am.
My name's Caleb Coffin.
Yeah, so, do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Okay, and your full name and address for the record, please?
My name is Caleb Coffin. Caleb, C-A-L-E-B, Coffin, C-O-F-F-I-N. And I live on 752 Buck Lane, so right up the street from where the ordinance is requested.
What would you like to house?
Yeah, so I won't dig up too much of your time, a lot has already been said. I just wanted to highlight that I frequently go through this intersection, specifically walking. I don't drive through it very often, tend to try to avoid it if I can. I walk through it very often, because it's the only way I can get to the train station to be able to access city and access, you know, other things to do. And I think the fact of the matter is, is that the current, like, space of land the gas station owns that they want to expand upon is just too small for what the, what is essentially a business that attracts more cars. Like, they can build a convenience store, and it might attract more people walking. It'd be great if it attracted only people walking, but the fact that it's attached to a gas station means that, for the most part, people who, you know, service the convenience store are going to be driving. And the issue is that if you just add more congestion to that intersection, it just makes it more unsafe for people walking. I'm not against, in general, like, adding more businesses, I think that's fine, but I just think that needs to be taken into account, that that's a very heavily trafficked pedestrian intersection, just because of the convenience of the train station there. So I think if this was going to be approved, which I'm against, but if it was going to be approved, I think it should be heavily considered that there should be a lot of thought taken into account into pedestrians around that area. And I understand that the business isn't necessarily responsible for keeping up, making the intersection safe and everything, but I just want to make it clear that the benefit of that service and of the, the public transit is very useful for the neighborhood, and it's also a big part of the comprehensive plan that the town's been pushing, is that they want to promote more walkability and more use of public transit. And I think that approving a expansion of a business beyond what is, you know, in the law for how big of a square area that it should be, goes against that direct plan. So I just want to make that clear. That's all I had to say. Thank you.
No questions?
Jesse?
No questions.
Bob?
No.
Jessica? All right, thank you, Caleb. Give one more. Yep, come on up, ma'am. I will swear you in. Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth?
What?
Do you, do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
And your full name and address for the record, please?
Okay. Clarissa F. Dillon, D-I-L-L-O-N, 768 Buck Lane.
What would you like to say today?
What?
What would you like to tell us?
Oh, I had a dreadful experience at the gas station. I was stopping to buy gas in the early afternoon, because I've learned to avoid rush hour, and I was going to New Jersey the following day for my brother's memorial service. As I was leaving the gas station after buying gas, my car got hung up on an iron post and its cement base that had fallen over. There was a whole row of these posts to keep us from driving down the slope on West Avenue by mistake, and this fallen post was invisible when I was sitting in the car, and my car was hung up on this, it couldn't move. And I went in the gas station office, and there was no interest in my problem. And I went out and I stood next to my car, and I was looking for my AAA card, which I couldn't find, and two nice women, total strangers, stopped and asked what the problem was. One of them called AAA for me. A huge tow truck was sent. The guy dropped the back and lifted my car off and then pushed it back, and it was wonderful. I offered him a tip, and he was grateful, and he looked under the car, I was afraid that there was damage, and here was the strip to New Jersey planned. There was no damage. I went in the office and I left a very tart note for the owner, who was not there, and I found out when he was going to be there. And I left my name, my address, my phone number, the problem, and pointed out that he had created a nuisance, and I was lucky not to have been hurt. And he did call that evening, and I told him he was lucky, I was nice, because I could have sued him for all sorts of problems, but it wouldn't occur to me to do that. I did not drive my car to New Jersey. At great inconvenience, I took the train, and that forced my sister-in-law to have to stop preparations and come and pick me up at the station and return me. So it was really a dreadful experience, and my feeling was, they could have cared less about my problem, and I'm old. I need help with things like cars. So the idea that they would create more problems in that area, I find very disturbing and very saddening. Questions?
No questions.
No questions.
If you have any, you have to shout.
Yep, I think there are no questions for you. Thank you very much, Clarissa.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Please raise your right hand. Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
Full name and address, please.
John Ferrera, F-E-R-R-E-I-R-A, 209 Fawn Lane in Cooperstown, where I've lived for seven years. And I'm not a traffic expert, I will say, but I am a commuter, and every day, I see dangerous daily decisions when I'm driving in and out of Cooperstown at this particular intersection. I see it with my eyes, when I see cars that are four or five deep, driving down Buck Lane toward Haverford Road, and they're not patient enough to wait to get into the gas station, and they risk a head-on collision, which I see with alarming frequency. And I feel it, that I see it with my eyes there, I feel it in my heart when I'm making a left turn from Haverford Road up to Buck Lane, and it's clear to make a left, and then somebody just jumps out in front of you, and then you're stuck, in my case, with my kids in the backseat, multiple times, we've almost been T-boned by a car coming down Haverford that's lolly, maybe, maybe moving too fast down Haverford Road, but a car is blocking me from safely turning onto Buck Lane. So more than anything, I'd like to emphasize that that particular entrance and exit to the gas station is a key source of the safety issues at that intersection. And this happens all the time. Like, if I think about what are the noblest goals of zoning? It's to bring order to Haverford Township, and it's to zone safely. And right now, there is not order at this intersection, and it is not safe. And if the forecasts are suggesting that there may be 100% increase in traffic, which, that's not my number, I just heard it here tonight, and if it's not orderly and it's not safe today, how could it possibly be any, even stay as orderly or as safe as it is now? So as you're weighing your decisions whether to do this, whether or not, whether or not, the, the status quo is, it's not consistent with the safety that people seek when they move to Brynford, when they move to Cooperstown. By reputation, that's, that's what people, part of what people come here for, that's part of why people stay here, and, you know, I ask you to consider that you have the power to protect, to protect our neighborhoods, our children, and our reputation for safety, and you have the power to prevent future incidents, injury, loss of life, heaven forbid, hopefully that never occurs. And I ask you to exercise these powers on behalf of the two communities that are represented here, the dozens of people that showed up, and the 400-plus people that signed that petition. I have nothing against the gas station, and they can be the most responsible owners in the world, I, I don't know them personally, but the, the drivers are not, especially not at rush hour, and you can put up signs, you can hopefully mitigate things to make it incrementally better, but if we double the traffic, I don't see a sign stopping people from doing what, making impulsive decisions that put our community further at risk than it is today.
Thank you. Bernadette?
No question.
Michael? Jesse? Bill? Jessica? Thank you. Thank you. Do you want me to go ahead tonight, or do you want? Yeah, yeah. Please raise your right hand. Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
Full name and address for the record.
David Channin at 748 Rugby Road. C-H-A-N-I-N.
Go ahead, David.
First, I just, I'll try to keep it tight. Having been on, well...
Michael? Jesse? Bill? Jessica? Thank you. Thank you. They do the numbers.
Do you want me to go ahead tonight, or do you want to?
Yeah, yeah. Please raise your right hand. Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
Full name and address for the record.
David Channin at 748 Rugby Road.
Go ahead, David.
First, I'll try to keep it tight. Having been on, well, first of all, I want to say that I'm a member of the Planning Commission, but I'm not here speaking on behalf of the Planning Commission, or the Library Foundation, or the Parks and Recreation Open Space Plan Committee. But first of all, like others, I want to thank you, but also emphasize that I truly empathize and sympathize with the lateness of the hour, and I'll try to keep it short. But I really appreciate your dedication. I know you don't get double pay for overtime. But having been through long hearings, I don't know if we ever made it to 11 o'clock, but we've come close. And as chair, I got a lot of objections about not cutting off testimony. So I also appreciate your giving everybody a chance to speak and be heard, which I tried to do as well. Anyway, moving on. One of the comments, there was a comment by one person in favor of the plan, and I thought he made very interesting points. But it highlighted an issue, an important issue, which is, pretty much, everything said was in favor of a change in policy for this location. It was not really about a variance as an exception to zoning. It was about, again, changes in policy, about changes in zoning policy, which are decisions by the, as you know, the commissioners, the governing body of the township, not a zoning hearing board. And therefore, his, I think his, and I told him this before he left, that his concerns should be expressed to the commissioners to request a change in zoning and the use of the properties, which is what would be required here. Which leads me to my other, the comment I had planned on making, which was the, or not, I hadn't planned on making any comments, but the comment I'd like to make is, on the discussion of the documents, the question came up, what's the relevance of comprehensive plan, the traffic diet of PennDOT, and the traffic study, the pedestrian safety bicyclist study, neighborhood study. And I would just add that the, they're important, not for their, the truth of their content, not, they absolutely are under consideration. I can say that, to my knowledge, they are under consideration by the township. It's part of a long, I won't go into the history, but a long process of planning by the township. So not for their truth, but for the fact that those, that the township is speaking with PennDOT regarding the traffic diet and calming plan, which will potentially, depending on what they get to, may very well affect this location. The comprehensive plan, which, as you, as we all know, is a draft, it's been through now three drafts, there'll at least be a fourth. But the fact that it's still under consideration, not final, is important because the process is ongoing. And with last night's public meeting, it was very well-attended and very, well, it was a big public meeting to discuss the plan. So that process is continuing with a lot of community input, as it should. We, the Planning Commission, had 10 hearings, nine or 10 hearings about it. But, so that part of the process is important, and will, no doubt, will have, whether they adopt the proposed, or the ideas or concepts for this part of the, the Brinford section of the Haverford Road Corridor, or reject them, one way or the other, those decisions are going to affect 700 Haverford Road. And same for the, I believe it's the same for the pedestrian safety study. The, so, why is that important to this decision? Because every variance, as you know, and you try to be, this board tries to be sensitive and not go beyond its jurisdiction, beyond the specific requirements in the code for a variance, specifically an unnecessary hardship under the municipality planning code. And when zoning hearing boards do go beyond their jurisdiction and grant variances outside those specific criteria laid out in the municipality planning code and the township code, they interfere with the decisions of the governing body, which the governing body, the commissioners in our township, decide what the zoning is of each area, the zoning map, and the uses of each district on that map. And this, so, we are in the process, the township is in the process of deciding what should be the appropriate land use plan and zoning for, among other places, the entire township, and in particular, the Haverford Road Corridor. And as I said, the decisions will affect the uses that will be permitted on, or not permitted on, at 700 Haverford Road, everywhere else, but Haverford Road will fall into that area. I think the policies of the township are important and should be cause for concern and deference, and that a variance in this situation at this time may not be appropriate. It may be best to allow the process to be finalized before there's a variance which would be permanent and would actually interfere with the planning process of the township. So I guess my point basically is, trust the process. I know that's probably not something we talk about these days in particular, but I would say, trust the process in our township. I have two more points. I'm not going to talk about all the other stuff I wanted to talk about, but, well, a couple, small point, somebody spoke about the need to show financial hardship. I think the opposite is, I just wanted to correct that. My understanding is that variances do not take into account the, the variance, the variance law is that zoning ordinance will not be granted simply because the ordinance deprives, because the existing ordinance deprives the owner of the most lucrative or profitable uses of the property. I won't go into that issue, but I just wanted to correct that statement. And it was another statement. Anyway, if I think of other things, I can submit them in writing and not take any more time tonight. I appreciated the comment of, again, regarding the planning process. I appreciated the comments about if a variance is granted to allow a second use when the code only permits one use, and you have other properties along a budding, or a couple of other properties along the stretch of the gas station, I think, four, three or four small parcels, I would see no basis for, almost done, I'd see no basis for, it would be hard to then deny the same extra uses to other properties. So it's a slippery slope. And that, in light of all the comments of the neighbors about not making, how that area is generally zoned residential, or institutional, or office, along Haverford Road in Brinford, it is not a commercial district as such, or other than the non-conforming uses and the narrow, single-use properties like, that are Zone C2, like the gas station. I'll skip that, I'll skip that. I'll talk about two more points, and I'll cut them. One, my own experience, over 30, 36 years, living nearby the gas station, and using the gas station as my regular gas station, and like everyone else, that's our favorite. It is extremely dangerous. To sum up, I would say that requires the skills of a New York cab driver to negotiate getting in and out. I actually have been a New York cab driver some, at times, but, and I didn't have those skills, but it requires those skills to get in and out, any of the exits and entrances. I also walk to the train, and there is a sidewalk, allegedly, there purports to be a sidewalk at the gas station. The problem with that sidewalk is, because of the width of Haverford Road and the lack of any shoulders on that road, which is not the fault of the gas station, but that's where it is, there's no room beyond the edge of that sidewalk. The sidewalk is used by cars. The problem with the gas station is, that sidewalk, and I've observed this myself, is cars using the sidewalk, because otherwise you can't get around the parked cars at the filling stations. There was a question about using West to exit, or to get, using, getting onto Buck Lane in order to exit. The problem there is, to get to Buck, you have to cross West. The crossing West is dangerous, because you don't know where the cars might be coming from. Moreover, getting onto Buck, getting onto Buck at the side of the gas station is extremely dangerous, in part, because there's lots of traffic, in part, because cars make right turns onto Buck, in part, because cars make left turns from Haverford onto Buck, and mainly because the bridge, if someone's going fast enough, over the bridge on Buck to Cooper Town, from Cooper Town, if the car's coming from Cooper Town, if they're speeding, if they're going quickly, you can be trying to enter, I've never had an accident there, but if you're trying to enter, I've had to slam on my brakes when somebody came steaming over the bridge as I was trying to get onto Buck Lane. Also, the car's coming the other way, the car's coming from Brinford, coming down Buck Lane. Many cars come through from Lancaster, down Buck, through to, going toward Cooper Town. They will also go through on Buck Lane on the Cooper Town side. So you're trying to get out of the gas station, and cars are steaming along when the light is green. And anyway, it's hard, because you're trying to maneuver in when there's a break in the light, but during a break in the light, cars are also making right and left turns off of Haverford Road enough. It's just not at all, it's extremely difficult to navigate within the gas station. Last, personal experience from this week, I parked at the gas station, I pulled into the gas station, lined up my car at the, tried to get to a pump on the right side of my car. There were cars already, two cars, all the pumps were occupied. So I got behind the pump that looked like somebody was finishing up. As they finished up, the car in front, another car in front of them pulled in, so they couldn't get out. I was behind that car, I tried to back up to let them out. This would be toward West, and I couldn't, because somebody else had come in from Buck and was behind me. And as I waited quite some time, other cars came in from Cooper Town, and, again, from my own observation, very recently, had to back up onto West. I don't know if they were on, actually onto Cooper Town, but they were outside the gas station, backed up. As others have pointed out, they've seen that, or they've, yeah, they've observed that, and that's what happened with me just this week. And then the cars on the other side started trying to, on the side near the salon, and the other, I guess you'd say, the north, or the, yeah, toward the north, were backed up behind the other car. The point of all this is, if you add a convenience store, that parking spaces for the convenience store, I don't know how you can do it. The cars lined up at the pumps would be, and if anybody tries to, oh, that's what happened, the car backed up, that's getting confusing, but the car ahead of, the car ahead of me tried to back up, and they did, and they got out. What would happen if there were parking spaces taking up that space, that's just, or pulling in or pulling out? It just seems, the space, as others have pointed out, the space is just too tight for more parking. Last, on a personal note, I am very concerned about the decision of this body on the, the decision to not follow the very clear, very direct order of the District Court, of the Common Police Court of Delaware County. I'm very troubled by that decision, which was not appealed, or the court was not asked to reconsider. In the court, this body just decided not to follow that order, and I'm sure you had reasons, but I find that a very troubling, troubling concern. If I have, I could go on, but I would, unless you have questions for me on that, I will either stop there or submit something in writing.
I have a question.
Go ahead, Jeff.
David, you said that we should not consider this variance because the comprehensive plan is in progress, and we should, quote, "trust the process." So can you confirm if you are of the opinion that the zoning board should not be hearing any variances until the comprehensive plan is complete, or just for this site?
I think you should factor in, to all decisions in the township, what the, A, what the policies of the township are. It might clarify your thinking on whether a variance is appropriate or not.
To confirm, the comprehensive plan is not adopted yet, correct?
Sorry?
The comprehensive plan has not been adopted yet, so it's not township policy.
Not at all. That's my point, it's in process. As is the other, this traffic calming on Haverford Road, and the pedestrian safety studies, those are all, certainly the traffic calming and the comprehensive plan are in flux. I think the township policies are important. When you look at a variance, you're saying, we think this variance should vary from what the commissioners decided. And to understand what the commissioners have decided and what policies underlie their decisions, it's helpful to let the process go forward.
To confirm, they have not decided on the comprehensive plan?
Absolutely not.
You stated that we should wait, or not give a variance to this project, because we should trust the process.
I think it should factor into the decision
Thank you.
that that process is ongoing, and it's in your discretion, but it might be best to hold off.
You do realize we have time constraints imposed on us to hear cases, otherwise they're deemed approved, right?
Pardon?
Otherwise, they could be deemed approved, correct?
Correct. I understand. It can't be postponed indefinitely.
That's right.
But maybe that's a reason to deny and let it come up another day after the owner, maybe the owner will be in better shape after, after the township makes changes in zoning. They've talked about more commercial uses. Many neighbors oppose it, but yes, that's all in flux and in process. It's just a factor, I think, that weighs in your decision.
Yes.
No questions?
No questions. Okay. All right. Heard of that?
Yeah, I just had a comment. You had referenced a couple times, you're going to provide something in writing.
I said I might.
Yeah, I don't think that a non-party is permitted to start providing writings, or exhibits, or testimony outside this record to the zoning hearing board. I understand you may ask for findings of fact, conclusions of law.
Correct. I mean, the record, the record will be closed as of tonight, if there's, I mean, no other witnesses. I understand the party participants have rested. There's no further public comment. The record will be closed, but yes, the board will ask for the parties to submit findings of fact and conclusions of law.
Yes, the parties.
The parties.
Yes, yes.
I understand.
I don't want to get into people who are non-parties providing exhibits and stuff like that.
I would expect that those findings of fact and conclusions of law would be provided by you and Mr. Yanoff.
Yes.
I have no intention of submitting those findings of fact and conclusions of law. I have no intention of submitting those findings of fact and conclusions of law.
That'd be a lot of work.
What I might do, what I don't know if I'll do, but I'd like to reserve the right to submit a letter to council. Is that permitted?
To?
To, yeah, I would, I would share it with the attorneys.
Yeah, I can't tell you that I would, I would.
I would object to that.
Supply it to the board because it's not of record, so, yeah.
Understood. I'm just very, very concerned about that decision, and I wanted to put that on the record.
And there was some extensive, if I recall properly, some extensive argument by both sides as to the interpretation of that order, and I believe Bernardet had argued that Mr. Yanoff's interpretation was incorrect as to what it actually said. Mr. Yanoff had argued that Bernardet's interpretation was incorrect, and the board took those arguments and rendered a decision based on that. So I understand your concern, but there was a long argument about what that order actually said.
I think it was clear as a bell, sorry.
And I would argue.
With all due respect, with all.
All three attorneys were present.
Let me finish, please. Yes, all the attorneys were present, and they were present in the courtroom when they were, when the ruling, when the hearing was conducted, and they did not ask for a further hearing in the court, as I understood it, unless I'm wrong, please correct me, and they didn't ask for reconsideration by the court, and they didn't ask for an interlocutor or appeal or anything else.
An appeal.
That's, that's not for me.
Okay.
But I wanted to express my deep concern about district, as a person who's very active in this township and a citizen of this township, as we all are.
You mentioned that you were not here representing the Planning Commission, but for the record.
Correct.
Did you chair a meeting regarding this case as chairman of the Planning Commission?
I, I recuse myself from that.
Did you continue to chair the meeting, though?
I think I turned the gavel over to another member of the Planning Commission, I'm pretty sure.
Did you vote on the?
At the beginning, I had some questions about what was being proposed, so I could decide to recuse myself.
Did you remain at the dais for the duration of the meeting?
I think I did for that part of the discussion, but I did recuse myself from the, certainly from the merits of that, I just wanted to know what was being proposed because I was confused by it.
Yeah, no other questions.
But I really did not participate in the decision, and I'm pretty sure I turned over the gavel to the vice chair.
Anything else, Jess? Bill?
That's a good question. It's a good question.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, with, with that, we're going to close the record on this case, and we'll talk about scheduling of a decision, but before we, we close the record, Michael, did you admit, did you have your exhibits admitted?
No, I'd like to move for the admission.
Yeah, that, that would be P1, P2, and then P4 through P9, right?
Correct, that is correct.
So they're, they're admitted. And I think Bernardet, I think she admitted.
She did.
So I think this, Mr. Chairman, it would just be a matter of trying to determine timing for council to submit findings of fact and conclusions of law. Obviously, they will need to order the transcript, which could take some time, and then obviously have to review that and prepare the findings of fact and conclusions of law, which will take some additional time. So initially, I would just respectfully ask if both council for their clients would waive any applicable time periods under the MPC and the township zoning code to allow this board to make a decision in connection with this matter, seeing that both parties are going to submit findings of fact. Is that okay?
Yes, I'm assuming it'll be within reason, the, the time period.
Yeah, I mean, we're limited within 45 days, obviously, so after the last hearing, and I don't know how quickly the, you know, I, I want to give you guys enough time to get the record and prepare what you need to prepare for submission, so I'm looking more towards what you guys feel is, is appropriate.
The answer is yes.
Okay, all right.
I'm sorry?
The answer is yes, we're going to, we're going to waive.
So how, how long, how long do you think you'll need after we get the transcript? Maybe what we'll do is, Arlene's pretty good about getting them out relatively quickly. Maybe if she sends out an email letting you guys know that she's prepared and copies me, how long do you think after that you would need to prepare to submit those?
60 days? 30 days?
My hearing is key.
He said 60 days.
I said 60 days.
Let me just take them out.
Yeah.
60 days after, after.
60?
60 after the transcripts.
I could do it faster than that.
Well, I think the board, I think the board would, would like it a little bit faster than that. 45 days, I think, would be more appropriate, because I also want to make sure that we, we end up making a decision shortly thereafter, so we're going to have to advertise that because we're not picking a date today for when that decision's going to occur.
That's okay with us.
Okay.
So 45 days from?
From the date the transcript gets issued to you guys.
Correct.
Yeah. Just making sure everybody's spent enough time.
Say that again?
Just making sure everybody has enough time.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you all, all right.
Thank you, Seiskin.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, and now we'll close the record on this case, and.
We will just have to pick a date, like I said, indicating once we understand when they're going to be able to submit within that 45-day period, we will then advertise a new date.
Mr. Yanoff.
Okay.
Do you need him back?
Late one thing. And next Thursday, we'll be right back, I'm having a back massage, like you can imagine. Been sitting since 8:00 this morning, and we're back here next Thursday. So we're adjourned.